Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the October twenty fifth meeting of the Jersey City Planning Board. Uh while we wait for the room to fill up, if you could, please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, everybody. All right. Could we have a sunshine announcement, please, Cam?
Yes, okay. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled five thirty P M start. This planning board meeting is being held virtually as a video conference that's open to the public. And in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the city clerk on October twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage. And all distribution materials were made available to the board were also published and available to the public.
All right, Cam, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Okay. Acting Vice Chair, uh Gangadin.
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Uh, aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres. Okay, and Commissioner Ramirez.
Aye.
Okay, and Chairman Langston.
Here.
Okay, super. We have six commissioners present. We have a quorum.
All right, thanks, Cameron. I do want to extend um a welcome to Commissioner Ramirez tonight. She's our newest commissioner and just moments ago took the oath. It was exciting, to say the least. And all right, if we can move on, please swear in the staff, Mike.
And I see Cameron, Tim, Tanya, Matt, Francisco. Do you guys swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, thank you. All right, thank you, everybody. Um Cam, I know we have some correspondence, some items carried. Can we go through that?
Yes, we received um letters from items twenty-three and twenty-four on the agenda requesting to adjourn with preservation of notice to date certain November fifteenth. Um so that is item twenty-three, case P twenty-two dash zero seven one, address is forty-four, uh four hundred forty-seven, excuse me, Central Avenue. Uh requesting to carry to November fifteenth with preservation of notice. And item twenty-four, uh case P twenty-two dash one forty-three, address is ninety-nine Storms. Requesting to be carried with preservation of notice to November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. So again, items twenty-three and twenty-four both requesting to be carried to November fifteenth.
All right, thanks, Cam. So just uh for the public's information, if you receive notice for either one of those applications, uh four forty-seven Central Ave is a canvas dispensary. Uh ninety-nine Storms Ave is a six-story building containing fifty units. Uh if you receive notice for either of those applications tonight, they will not be heard tonight. They will be heard on the fifteenth. That's our next meeting. And you will not receive a new notice. This is your notice that they're being carried. Uh so if you'd wish, uh tell your neighbors, tell all your friends, and we'll see it back here on the fifteenth. Uh we also have under adjournments, uh case P two-one dash one-five-three is a minor site plan with variances for two fifteen Warren Street. That is carried also to a date certain November fifteenth. And we have case P two-two dash one-one-zero is a preliminary and final major site plan for five eleven Newark Avenue. Uh also carried to a date certain November fifteenth. So at this point, let's get into old business. Uh let's call case P two-two dash zero nine three is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances. Uh that is for one hundred Summit Place. This was carried from September sixth with testimony taken already. Um let me bring up your email here, Cam. Uh okay, so the following commissioners were present at that meeting, myself, uh Dr. Gonzalez, uh Commissioner Gangadin, Commissioner Cruz, Commissioner Desai, Commissioner Lipsky, and Commissioner Green were all here for that application. Uh anybody else, uh Cam, if you could just go down the list? Anybody that wasn't present, uh let's just get confirmation that they either read the transcript or watched the video.
Chairman, before we do that, let's acknowledge Commissioner Lipsky is on the screen. Thank you for joining, Commissioner. Good evening.
Thank you, Council. Good evening, everyone, Chairman.
How are you, Steve?
Good.
Good evening, Steve.
How are you all?
Okay, so that would just mean that Commissioner Ramirez um will need to acknowledge they've read the transcript.
Hello, I have read the transcripts. Thank you.
We're good.
All right, Commissioner Torres, Cam.
Oh, sorry, Torres.
Yes, I watched the video with the judge. So I'm up to date.
Okay, super.
Okay, great. So uh just for the record, all commissioners present are able to vote on this tonight and able to comment.
Okay, so I uh cannot find Richard in the audience. However, there is a Harry K. Um it might be him.
Because there's uh two hands raised right now, Cam. Is that any indication?
Uh I don't, the engineer, yes, but um.
John had his hand up previously before we even.
Yeah, it was on, uh it was up in the beginning.
All right.
Yeah, Cam, uh Richard's with our architect and Tom Barrett, so they they might all be on one one screen.
Is that John?
I believe so.
Okay, super. All right, promoting them now.
Hello? Hello, can you hear us?
We can. Good evening.
I can hear you.
Oh, good evening. So this is Richard Kaplan. What we did this evening to make it slightly easier is uh we are at Burton Engineering, so Jasvinder Arjani is sitting to my left. And uh the principal of the applicant, White Woo, is sitting to my right. So the three of us are here together. That's why it's not showing as um as me. It should be showing as, does it show as you, Jas? It shows as Burton Engineering. So all three of us are here. Uh can you see us?
We can, yes.
So there's three of us here together. Um Sam, Sam Bellamy, who's the professional planner, is remote because he was unable to be here. He has another application this evening. So he is in one location. We are in a separate location altogether.
Excellent. Okay, gotcha.
So, Council, the only question is, there's a gentleman under the moniker John Stellatell. Is he related to your application that you're aware of? Is he a witness of yours?
No, no, we're not. We we don't know who he is. Um you should, Burton Engineering and Samuel Bellamy, and that's it. As as part of the the applicant.
Fair enough. So Chairman, it's obviously up to you whether you want to, oh, he put his hand down, so we're good to go.
Okay. The floor is yours, Council.
Okay. So uh we're here for the second um appearance. Um at the first appearance, we had one witness, which was uh the engineer Jasvinder Arjani. He's sitting to my left. Um seemingly, we have Whiting Woo, who's sitting to my right. He is the principal of the applicant Summit Greenwich Urban Renewal. He's also the president of Summit Import Corp., which is the uh occupant of the building. Um we have also, since the last meeting, the applicant has retained the services of Dresner Robin Planner. Samuel Bellamy is here, professional planner. Um he will be a witness tonight. He will be testifying as an expert on professional planning. Since the last meeting, um we have made two additional submissions. Burton Engineering has sent on October eleventh revised plans. And our intention is for Mr. Jasvinder to go through those revisions with you. In addition, there was some difficulty last time of showing the renderings. And we believe we've got that in in a good place tonight. So we'd like to just show some of these color renderings. At that point, um we will have Mr. Bellamy as the professional planner. He has submitted a principal point statement. He will be testifying about uh the variances and some of the others on. Okay. Try to continue?
Please. Yes, I'm sorry, Council.
Um um we we have Whiting Woo here this evening. Um we don't intend for him to be, you know, presenting. He is here to answer questions. He might fill in some specifics about the site in case any issues come up. He is here. Uh he's sitting to my right, but at this point, we don't have any specific testimony for him. Um our intention is to start with Mr. Um Arjani. And he's going to describe the most recent submission, the changes to the plans, and some of the other technical aspects. And then our intention is to turn it over to Mr. Bellamy to talk about the variances.
So let's do it that way, Council. We're gonna have the revisions to the plan, so we'll bring them up on the screen. We'll mark them. And then we can go through what changes have been made to the plan. And after we have that testimony, we can elicit the testimony from Mr. Bellamy. I believe where we had left off was with regard to the elevations, the size of the, the number of signs, size of signs, location of signs, where the variances were necessary for those signs, and that's kind of where we were having trouble following the presentation. So I don't know if uh the plan has changed in addition to that. And I don't know if Mr. Bellamy is going to opine outside of that. I'll leave that to you and how you want to present that.
Okay, yes, uh for the most part, the changes relate to the signs. But I'll let Mr. Jasvinder to go into that. He was sworn in last time qualified as an expert. Do you um do you want a re-swearing or any additional qualifications for him?
If he could, sir, your license is still current and in good standing?
Yes, it is.
And I will remind you, you remain under oath. And with that, if you could state your name for purposes of the record, and then feel free to begin with any screen sharing and testimony.
Sure, uh my name is Jasvinder Arjani, J A S V I N D E R, last name A R J A N I. And I'm a licensed architect. Business address is Burton Engineering, sixty-six Glen Avenue, Glen Rock, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
And if I could share my screen, uh if I'm allowed.
You shouldn't be able to.
Yeah. So uh last time when I was presenting, I I had the rendering on on my screen. And I thought it was being shared, but unfortunately, I didn't realize at the time. So I will start with the rendering itself. And what we have here is drawing R.
Sir, let me just interrupt you. Mike, can you answer? Are we up to A three at this point?
That's what I see, yes.
Thank you. So, sir, let's go ahead and mark this as A three for the record.
So A three is a rendering drawing number R two. It's dated ten-ten two thousand and twenty-two, and it shows the south elevation uh of the building. And what you see up on the screen is on the left side is uh the lower uh roof is an existing portion of the building, and the right is the proposed addition. The finishes are light gray, that metal, insulated metal panels that will match the existing. And the windows again are red frame, which which also matches the existing, which is on the uh north side of the existing building. So we are keeping the same color scheme for the windows, the signage. I'll describe the sign areas a little later, but just for the color purposes, it's red sign on a gray background, which is similar to the signs on the, I would say, the east, the west side. And uh uh the the previously, uh we had proposed internally illuminated signs. So you see a dark line under the sign. So it's now externally illuminated. It is, it is just the reverse of a goose neck light. It is throwing light at the sign from the bottom. Uh that's the one we chose. If, and I think top and bottom, it doesn't matter, but we prefer the bottom lighting of the sign. Uh besides that, uh all the other metal trims, like the top coping, the railing, everything, uh and the canopies will be dark bronze color. On the right side, you see the east elevation, which is more uh visible in the next rendering. So I'll go to the next drawing, which is R three. And we will label it as A four. Exhibit A four, and that is drawing R three dated ten-ten two thousand and twenty-two. And on the right side, uh which is the vertical lines, which is again uh insulated metal panels, pre-coated light gray color uh is uh the north face of the building, and the taller section is the uh addition. And the lower section is the existing building. The difference between the south and the north is the north elevation does not have any windows. It's a full uh single tall story with storage racks beyond. While on the uh south side, we have a mezzanine uh office, so that section was two stories. So therefore, the windows on the upper level. Now, on the left side is east wall, which is uh a slightly different finish, and that will be masonry construction. The reason we have chosen that to be masonry is required to be fire-rated because it's uh it's a building code requirement. And uh it's a flat wall with no opening, so we chose a pattern in gray colors to make, to break the monotony a little bit. So you have these bands uh on and coin type of uh colors on the two ends. Again, the sign on the north elevation is similar and slightly larger than the south side and has a again a a light at the bottom uh for external illumination. There is no sign on the east wall. Uh now, having described the elevations, that the revision to the plan that we have submitted recently, which is dated ten-ten uh to twenty-twenty-two, the site plan, there are no changes at all. Uh the site plan remained the same. The elevations, uh the basic changes are the finishes that I just described and to the signage. Uh signage changes in consultation with the planner, Mr. Bellamy. We went over the calculations and redid the the sign areas, and of course, the illumination was removed from uh internal to external. So I'll I'll go to the building elevations, drawings, C four point. I think, let me just go back.
So, sir, if you could just stop on the prior sheet that you just flashed past, the colored rendering of the site plan, I guess.
Yes, yeah.
So the north elevation is at the top of the screen. And the south elevation is at the bottom of the screen. The right side is the east elevation with no signage.
East, no signage, yes.
And you did not show the rendering of the west elevation, which is technically the front of the building?
Yeah, I have that on the elevation. So I was going to the elevation drawings. I don't have a colored rendering of that side.
All right, I just want to make sure that I'm following, that's it.
Yeah. And and just to remind the board, the entrances from Summit Place, you enter the site here and current uh existing building, the access, the office is on the top left corner. And their loading docks on on the uh left side. And the proposed addition is to the east, which is a different shade here, and the loading docks here are facing south. And the office will be on the south side as as well. So the this addition access will be from the south side, while the existing access is from the north uh end of the building, with loading docks to the west. So if I may go back to the elevations.
Please.
Yeah.
So this is drawing C four point four. And it is a part of the set that you have revised ten-ten twenty-two. And the top shows the west elevation that Council was just referring to, uh which we don't have a color rendering. So the lot, the bottom section is the existing building, which is a lighter gray color. And the top section is the uh top part of the addition, which is beyond the existing building. And uh the 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 finishes are the same, the metal panels. So we didn't do a additional rendering from this side. But the sign that is proposed is very, is similar to the north face. And the sign area, I will go face by face for the sign areas. And uh in terms of uh the description and calculation and the variances, I'll leave that to Mr. Bellamy to uh opine upon.
So, Council, let's just mark this as A five for purposes of the record and just give us the revision date. Did you resubmit the entire package with revised dates?
Correct, yes. So the revised dates are only on the revised drawings, and there were four of them, but we did resubmit the whole package.
Right. So let's just mark this as A five, since we have it pulled out on the package and just give us the last revised date. I think you said ten-ten.
So the west elevation, uh I, Mr. Bellamy will go into this more, but if you see, there's a, I I don't know if you can see very clearly, there's a dashed line that goes around this existing building, which is one story, and then it comes down and and is around that. So that is the first floor wall area. And we use that to calculate the the sign percentage of the uh of the wall face. And then for the new addition, this section from this point onwards to the north is is one story uh top. It's it's uh, there's no second floor. And use that for the top sign. So the sign area on the uh west elevation, the existing is uh approximately eight hundred square feet, and it's five percent of the existing wall elevation. And the proposed is three hundred and thirty square feet, which is five percent of the proposed section of the building, not counting the the two-story section of the wall. And if we add them both up, it it'll still be at five percent of the overall wall area. So that's the west elevation. The the proposed sign will have an external illumination underneath, similar to what I described earlier. Uh the north elevation, which is the uh drawing below, it shows the addition on the left side and uh the existing on the right side, there's an existing signage uh. And again, the one-story section goes like this and then comes down. That's a two-story. So we to chose this section of the wall for calculation of the wall area. And north facade, the existing sign is two hundred and eighty square feet, which is three point three percent of the wall area. And the proposed uh is again, this whole thing is one, one story for story purposes. And the sign is three hundred and thirty square feet, which is three point five percent of the wall area. And together, it adds up to three point five percent of the total wall area existing and proposed together. The bottom just shows the attachment details, which was required requested by your planner. So I'll go back to the next drawing, which is C four point five, uh which is the other two elevations, and I'll mark this as A six.
Thank you.
So the east uh top is the east elevation, which I described earlier with the masonry uh wall construction, and there are no signs proposed here on the uh east side, and the bottom is the south, south elevation. And on the left side is the existing building, and the right section, which is taller, is the proposed. There is no existing sign on the left side, and the proposed uh that this is the front for the uh addition. So we are proposing a sign uh on the south wall. And for this calculation, we have considered the first floor to be just uh half the wall, because there is a second story above. And uh based on that, uh we have proposed a sign, which is one hundred and ninety-five point five, one nine five point five square feet, which is five percent of the uh proposed wall area, and it adds up to one point two percent of the overall wall area. So the total of two existing signs and three proposed signs, the all-new signs are externally illuminated. Uh besides the, um if 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 I may move on to the freestanding sign, unless you have a question on this uh building elevations.
No, let's move on to the freestanding sign, and we'll get everybody's questions together.
The freestanding sign previously was proposed as uh I think it's on drawing. Let me just. Yeah, here. This is drawing C three point one. So if you want to mark it as A seven, right? So we don't have the detail of the actual what will go on the sign. It will be summit again. But we reduce the sign area from thirty square feet to twenty square feet to comply with the permitted sign area. We also remove the internal illumination, and the sign will also be externally eliminated. And the only variance associated with this is the height. And the height for the freestanding sign will be ten feet, where four is uh uh permitted. And the location of the sign is uh on the side drawing. If you want, I can go back to the sign and show you where these signs are. They're fairly inside the site and will act more like a directional sign, and I'll again leave that to Mr. Bellamy to explain uh the, a fine on this location and this uh require appropriateness. Uh other than that, the site plan, uh there were no other changes to the drawings, the cover sheet, zoning notes were revised to reflect all the changes in terms of uh sign areas and sign height and all the bulk requirements. Uh the only one correction was to the front yard, which I had mentioned in my last meeting, which was type, which was a typo, which is not changing. It was one oh six point six eight mentioned, and it's actually sixty-three point four one. That was just a correction. So that that those are the plan changes.
Okay, Mr. Arjani, could you go back to the site plan and show us where those freestanding signs are located?
So this is drawing C two point two. It does have a revision, because we added the dimension for the location of the sign. So if you want, I can mark that also.
Uh sure, we're up to A eight.
Eighty-eight. And I will, this is drawing C two point two, revised ten-ten twenty-two, and I'll just zoom into this corner where the signs are. So the existing sign is after you enter the property is is at this location. It's forty-nine feet from the lot line, and it's fairly set back from the entrance. Um and and the new sign is ninety-one point five feet from the property line. And as as I, as mentioned earlier, Summit Place is a private road, and the Harbor Drive, which is further south of here, is the public road. This is really when you enter the property at this point, it will direct the traffic to the new addition. So that's the purpose of this sign. It's uh that's the, these are the two signs, uh freestanding signs on the property.
Okay, but they will be branded, correct?
Yeah, they will be. It will say summit uh is what.
Okay, and um are these illuminated twenty-four hours a day, all of the signs?
Yeah, I I I think when the business is during the business hours, I think, and I can ask.
To twelve.
Yeah, until midnight.
Okay, until midnight. Is that the, those the business hours?
The business hours, I think, are earlier, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
Would you like, uh, Mr. Is it okay without uh?
Yeah, if he's gonna testify, we do have to have him sworn in.
And Mr. Wilson, it's uh Mr. Wu, correct? I'll swear you in.
Specifically.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give, and you have given, is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state by your full name, please?
White Woo, spelled W H I T I.
Whiteing Wu, spelled W H I T I N G. Last name W U.
Thank you.
Mr. Wu, good evening. And you are the principal?
Correct.
Okay, great. So what are your business hours?
Mondays to Fridays, we open nine, eight thirty. And then the second shift will end about eleven thirty in the evening. Unless there are overtime, but regularly would be like eleven thirty.
Okay. What we generally do with. With any signage that's lit, we do limit that to hours of business, hours of operation.
Understood.
And I'm sorry, what was the start time again?
Eight thirty in the morning.
Eight thirty, okay.
And eleven thirty at night is the house of business.
Okay. I mean, I'm comfortable then with eight to twelve.
I am very comfortable.
Um. Okay, counsel, anything else?
We have no other testimony for Mr. Arjani. Of course, we have Mr. Bellamy, but. That's what we do was to describe the changes and.
Okay, I mean. Here for, for purposes of the record, we have two existing wall signs. We're proposing three wall signs. We're going to have a total of. Five wall signs. One existing monument sign, a proposed monument sign. So two monument signs. And five wall signs in total.
Correct. Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, before we move on to Mr. Bellamy, I do want to give the board an opportunity to. Ask any questions. Of Mr. Arjani or Mr. Wu, anybody, any questions?
I have a question for the architect. I don't know if I missed it, but the existed size that had lighting. On the existing size prior to or no?
I believe the existing. Building signs are eliminated and. Freestanding sign is also, yeah, existing are eliminated.
And we're going to limit, we're going to illuminate the other sides, the new sides, definitely, and the ones that are previous that are existed. Is it the same?
The, the new signs will be externally eliminated. The existing is proposed to remain as they are at this time.
Okay.
Thanks, Eddie. And anybody else? Any questions?
No.
All right. Okay. Thank you guys. Thank you for the clarification.
If there's no further questions, we're ready for our next witness. Who is Mr. Bellamy?
I say I'm sorry, if you raise your red hand, you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And for the record, could you state your name, please?
Samuel Bellamy, last name B E L L M Y.
Thank you.
My license is current and in good standing.
You beat me to it. Thank you. Yeah, we've qualified you in the past. So once again, congratulations, you're qualified.
So I'm just going to plug my screen. Oh, our architect Jazz went through the. And you should be looking at the site plan here. Let me know if that's showing.
We do, we have it.
Okay. Look, just switch. So this is sheet. C S one of the plans that C one of the plan set. So I'm just going to pull up the, the map of the surrounding area. As Jazz walked through, I think the, his previous testimony at the last hearing. The site is very irregular in how you access it. It's essentially a landlocked parcel. That is accessed from a private drive, private road summit place, which is the tax lot. And then the, the public right of ways, actually Harvard Drive, and then surrounding the site. Are raised highways. You have NJ four forty coming in from the west going south. You have the race turnpike extension and NJ one eighty five. So based on the Jersey City land development definitions. I'm going to switch over to the illustrated site plan. Your, your street frontage is actually only this portion of the property that, that fronts on to the summit place as it, as it goes into the corner of the property here. What's permitted as far as the signage in the redevelopment plan is one wall sign per each street frontage. So just based on the orientation of the site, the irregular nature of it and the, where the building is located on the property, there is no true street frontage. For this property, for this building. In addition to the, to the one wall sign per street frontage, the other requirement is a total exterior sign area. Not, not to exceed the equivalent of five percent, the first story, story portion of the wall to which it is attached. So switching back to the, to the site plan, I'm going to pull up the elevations. This is sheet C four point five, the, the site plan set that was submitted. We did add the, a table on the site plans to really demonstrate the, the calculations that we went through for, for this exercise for the proposed signage. So Jazz did walk the board through each of these numbers. There's one existing sign on the west, west facade and one existing sign on the north facade. So we're proposing an additional sign on the west facade for two signs total, an additional sign on the north facade, two sign totals. And, and one new sign on the south side. So in total, there's going to be five proposed wall signs. What we did between the both the proposed and the existing signage is we, we looked at the calculations closely and we, in order to meet the intent of. Where we feel the zoning ordinance was with the five percent maximum. We reduced the signage, the proposed signage down. So as you can see that the total along the, the west facade is. Is actually equal to five percent. The total along the north facade is a little less at three point five percent and then the south facade at one point two. Two percent. So these are still deviations in that for the number of signs, not along a street frontage. But as far as the, the overall calculations, we believe we are meeting the, the five percent. Intent of, of those requirements. As far as the. The, again, as far as the location of, of the property. It's only accessible from the private drive. The visibility really does come from those raised highways that surround the property. So we believe that the proposed signage and existing signage in these locations really provide for the visibility of the building. From, from those raised highways and identify, and identification. From those highways allowing for, you know, trucks coming off the highways to, to orientate themselves to, to get to the site. The other variances we're requesting are for the number of freestanding signs. So there is one existing freestanding sign. We're proposing an additional one. So two total freestanding signs, which is a deviation where only one's permitted. In addition to that, the proposed freestanding sign will be ten feet in height. Where four feet is permitted. We did reduce this overall signage area down to the twenty square feet to comply with that maximum requirement. And again, this freestanding sign where it's located is to orientate. Trucks into the site and into the new driveway area around the building. We believe the height provides for appropriate visibility for those trucks entering from, from summit place. Overall, the, the project does advance the purpose in municipal land. You saw. Proposed addition is permitted use, complying with all bulk requirements. That's consistent with purpose A. It's an appropriate location for this addition, consistent with purpose G and. The proposed addition is consistent with the rest of the building and will promote a desirable visual environment consistent with purpose I. In my professional opinion, there's no, no substantial detriment to the general welfare. The proposed signage as described by our architect is harmonious and consistent with the architecture of the building. It was, it's designed to be proportionate and, and complements the existing signs and overall industrial nature of, of the building and surrounding area. As described, we, we changed it to external lights that will be uplit. This will, will not have any glare on adjacent properties. The proposed lighting and signage is substantially setback from all property lines. So we don't see any negative impact with that. And again, the proposed signage is consistent with other signage in, in the surrounding area. The granting of deviations likewise will have a substantial impairment to the zone planners owning ordinance. Again, the proposed project meets the purpose of the modern industrial park district where this property is located. We're also promoting several of the redevelopment objectives with this project. And in general, this, this area is identified as industrial and the master plan. And will be continued to be an economic engine for the city. So with that, I, I think that the proposed deviations. The, the benefits of the proposed deviations do substantially outweigh any detriments. And that that project meets both the positive, negative criteria. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have on this.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bellamy. I have no questions. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your testimony. Uh. Counsel, is there anything else you want to add?
That was no. You're on mute. Oh, my, you were.
No, no, you're, we hear you.
Sorry, we were not sure mute, non-mute. No, we, we are relying upon Mr. Bellamy's testimony. I think at the last meeting. That's what the board felt was missing. And I believe we've now given that thorough explanation. He's covered the not positive and the negative criteria. We made some changes in the plans based on his recommendations. And no, we believe that the application is appropriate and the variances are appropriate.
Okay, thank you, counsel. I do have one. Condition I'd like to, to, to discuss. Since we don't have any detail on the freestanding signs on the wayfinding signs. So it was the testimony that they'll have branding for. The location and they'll also have wayfinding. So I would like to get on record and maybe get a condition on this that anything up and above that. Would be a deviation, wouldn't comply with our, our decision tonight. So the testimony is, you know, branding. For the building. And wayfinding.
And just to be clear, it's the intention right now that Summit Import Corp will be the occupant, but it's conceivable that there may be another occupant.
Of course.
Maybe branding for more than, more than one occupant, but.
Of branding for only the occupants of the building is where I'm going with this.
Correct. Yes, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, the last thing I want to see is, you know, us give you a. A free billboard to rent out.
That's not the intention.
Of course, of course, but you know, if.
But it sounds.
Someday the location changes hands, you know, that would be binding.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you, guys. So if there's no more questions, I'll open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise that hand. Anybody from public?
Chair, seen a more public. I would like to close the public portion.
Second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Public is closed. Tim, do you have anything you want to add?
Um, just the planning is in agreement with the testimony of Mr. Bellamy. We feel that the. Variance is requested are de minimis and are not in detriment of the. The redevelopment plan with the intent of zoning overall and planning recommends.
All right, thanks, Tim. And it's nice to see some new views out of your camera there.
Sarah, I would like to make a motion to approve case P two dash zero nine three as presented to the board this evening, together with additional condition and staff recommendation.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval with conditions.
Acting Vice Chair Gang.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Oh, did anybody, you should ask.
Oh, my mistake. And Chairman likes.
I want to thank the applicant for coming back with Mr. Bellamy, giving us the clarification that we were looking for. I think the deviations are. In line with the redevelopment plan with master plan. I don't think there's any detriment and I'm going to vote aye.
All favor motion passes.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
All right, let's call case P two, two dash one, five, one is a two year extension for three sixty seven, tenth street.
Morning, Thomas Lee.
Good evening, commissioners for the record, Tom Lean of Connell Foley. I don't believe this was required to be noticed for, however, I did notice and provided an affidavit to Cameron this afternoon. I just want to make sure counsel is in receipt and that it is in good order.
Thank you, counsel. I am in receipt of your affidavit of publication, proof of mailing with respect to the extension. I've had the opportunity to review it. All does appear to be in order. We'll mark it as A one for the record.
All right, thank you, counsel. This is a request for a two year extension for an approval provided by this board under P nineteen, one eighty one. It is the third phase of the Hamilton House project, which is located on the north side of Eno's Jones Park. It is for a seven story residential building with fifty four residential units. Four of those are affordable. There is ground floor parking provided as well. This did expire back in May. Our client informed us of the expiration in the end of July and we did request the extension in August. The extension would take us from May twenty fourth, twenty twenty two to May twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. There were some very minor deviations granted with the approval related to the building height and the setback for the garage. It is our client's intent to move forward with the construction, but obviously COVID. And market conditions over the last year just delayed the project a little bit. So we're just asking for this extension so our clients can move forward to develop the project. Okay, thank you, counsel. And just for the record, any. Conditions placed on the previous. Resolution would still be in effect carried for. That, that is correct. Yes. Okay, thank you. Commissioner, does anybody have any questions?
No.
All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Lean. Thank you. So at this point, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. If you're calling in and you want to comment on this application, please press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody from public? Okay.
Members of the. I wish to motion to close.
We have one hand raised.
And I retract my motion.
Yeah, we just.
Promoting.
Fine.
Promoting. Shiva.
Hi, thank you. Is this, I just, I appreciate. Hi, thanks. Sorry, this is, is this for three, sixth street or tenth street? No, this is for tenth street. Okay, sorry, I apologize. Sixth street. Is still on tonight, right, Kim? Three sixty two, sixth street you're looking for? Yes, thank you. Okay, yeah, that'll be later, later on in the evening. Okay, appreciate it. Sorry to interrupt. No worries, no problem. All right. And once again, anybody from the public, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Being no other members of the public wishing to speak, I motion to close.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion and a second to close public. We are closed. Cam, do you have any objections?
Nope, you already did the heavy lifting for me on this case, asking that they comply with their previous conditions. Planning staff recommends approval.
All right, thanks, Cam.
Here, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two, two dash one, five, one. Two year extension for approval. All conditions remain under the previous case number.
Back it.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai. Commissioner Dr. Desai. Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Hi.
There you go.
Commissioner Lipski.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
All right.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, counsel. Steve, I hope you don't have to evacuate or anything. I hear an alarm going off out there.
Yeah, it's outside. If it happens periodically, hopefully I don't.
Okay.
If I do, I will let you know.
Good luck. Good luck. All right, so let's move on to new business. Let's call case P two two dash zero three four is a preliminary and final major site plan for One Second Street.
Okay, promoting Tiffany and Perry.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tiffany Biskowski, and I'm an attorney over at McGovern Legal Services. We represent the applicant in this matter. This is a preliminary final major site plan request with no variances. It's really for beautification of the area with added green space well beyond any requirements, addition of native plantings. There is no change in drainage or extensions beyond our current property lines. I do believe that the entire plan promotes the objectives of new urbanism and redevelopment plan. The notice of tonight's hearing was sent out to everybody on the two hundred foot list on September twenty second, twenty twenty-two, and it was published in the Jersey Journal on September twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two. The affidavit of proof of service and application and affidavit of publication were both submitted, I believe, back on October fourth, twenty twenty-two. With me today to present the proposal is Perry Stratt. I do apologize if I get this wrong, Perry Stravridis from Falcon Engineering. Chairman, I am in receipt of the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application. As counsel indicated, the application was originally scheduled for an earlier meeting and carried from that meeting through today's date. As such, I find it to be in order, and we can mark it as a one for the record.
All right, thank you, counsel. We want to perceive a Mr. Stavridis.
Yes, please.
All right, great. Perry, I have your right hand. Do you want any testimony to give tonight? It's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Sure thing. It's Pericles G. Stavridis. That's P.E.R.I.C.L.E.S. Last name is Stavridis, S.T.A.V.R.I.D.I.S.
Thank you.
You pronounced it perfectly, by the way. Very impressive.
I have some Greek friends. Good evening, Sarah. Let's just go over your qualifications and get you qualified to testify tonight.
Sure thing. So I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've been performing site civil engineering work for the last eight-plus years. And my license is currently in good standing.
Okay, great. Thank you. You're qualified.
Great. So first, thank you for for having us, Commissioners, Chairman, and everyone else on the call. The project that that we are proposing is a site improvements project. It's specific to the One Second Street location, which is at the corner of Green Street and Second Street. It's kind of a triangular shaped lot. And it faces both public right of ways. The limit of the work, however, is all to the exterior of the building. The pavement is in a, you know, state of deterioration. It's at the end of its useful life. Some of the sidewalk requires repair. And the alleyway next to the building, for lack of a better term, we would like to introduce a dog run for the residents of the building. In general, we're not seeking anything outside of making the area nicer or in terms of what was already there. We had gone back and forth in the design process as far as selection of landscaping. I believe you'll be pleased to know that we are selecting native plant species to keep with a vision of the area. And it's a really straightforward kind of project. If you guys have any questions about it, I'm happy to answer anything that that you might have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do you want to walk us through the improvements?
Sure thing. I'm not sure if I'm able to share a screen or not.
You should be.
There we go. I'm going to share that screen. Please let me know if you can see it.
We can, yes.
Perfect. So the large open space, and and just for reference, this is from the most recent set of signed and sealed plans that were provided to Jersey City. Essentially, on this side of the building, you've got Green Street. And to the north side of the building is Second Street. So along the perimeter of the building is where we are proposing all of our improvements. The main entryways here on Second Street. And we're proposing pavers where the current pavers are kind of settling. They're deteriorating, not really functioning very well. And then to either side, we are also proposing pavers. There is a pedestrian sidewalk concrete that runs along the outer edge of the building. And then to the side of the building is where the dog run would go for the residents of this community. Related to the actual asphalt paving, the paving replacements are happening in this area, which is kind of what we've been referring to as the point. The pavement limits are basically the pavement that's already there and is in a really bad state. So these are the kinds of improvements that we'd like to see happen for this this area. If I may, I'm going to switch over to a colorized kind of exhibit so that you can maybe see it a little bit better and visualize it in a you know, in a more.
Let's just mark this as a two, and this is a colorized site plan rendering.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And if you could, just make sure you get that to city planning for the.
So I actually sent it over to Mr. Black this morning.
Perfect.
So a- as I had mentioned, we've got garage entry for the building, paper entryway for the building, a paved parking lot, and then general areas of landscaping and beautification.
Now, okay, thank you, sir. Is that is that it?
I believe so. I also provided Mr. Black with two renderings that were developed during the concept level of this project that I think, you know, could illustrate.
Why don't we mark those and show those?
Sure. So the first one that was sent over was the front entrance.
Mark, this is a three.
So again, in general, you know, the this is the Second Street area. This is the front entryway. We've got planter boxes. Again, we've selected native native species. And really, we would just like to see the area revitalized. The other rendering that we provided was the area that was the dog run.
Mark, this is a four, please.
And this area would be a it would be a turf area lit by a site bollards similar to this one. And this is just kind of a way for us to get you guys to envision what we are proposing as a final product. I think that's about all I've got to share with the Commissioners and Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it. And you're you're not changing the number of parking spots. It's staying as it is currently?
That's correct. The parking number of spots are staying.
Okay, great. So I'll ask the board, anybody, Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, I just have a quick comment and a question, I guess, with a question. True. I do like the rendering of that dog walk at night. That's really nice. Enjoy that pitch. With that, though, that alley, you said that used to be an alleyway? And I went into that alleyway before. Any entrances that goes into that alleyway? Dog walk now or nothing that was there?
No, so it's it's currently fenced off. It's for use for the building. They would just like to make better use of it now. I believe currently it's it's a you know.
So it's basically just a a walkway like like a called it an alleyway. But there's really no, like, if I have my dog there, there's nobody going to be opening a door or door and walking up on top of the dog and the walkway, right?
No, 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 no. So so it's it's fenced off. It's really not accessible.
On that side. Okay, that's all. I like I like the way it looks. That's really nice.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I do have a question. I do have a question. Yeah, can you bring that picture of Second Street with the pavers in there? And I want to ask you, is this for a
Is this the?
Is this area for everybody or only residents of the building?
So this area is is on the.
Sir, we're not seeing anything on your screen.
Oh, I'm sorry. I believe that was sharing.
Yeah, we just see your your desktop.
Perfect. I'm sorry. So we're really limiting the the improvements to the lot that the building is on. So if you see here, the the sidewalk that's here, that that's the public right of way. This is open to people walking in, but it's not really meant or intended for use for the public.
And no, no vehicles are allowed on this street.
That's not necessarily true. The area with the pavers is is not really intended for vehicle use. The lot to the side, if you can see where my mouse is. This lot services these kinds of storefronts that are open to the public. Obviously, they would comply with any, you know, ADA requirements and and things of that nature, and they would be accessible even during construction. But you know, the 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 intent is not for people to drive from one side to the other.
So there will be a sign in the beginning, no vehicles are allowed, right?
We have not designed for a sign. However, I I don't anticipate that that would be a you know, an issue to provide. I can certainly look into that.
Yeah, thank you, Doctor. That's an excellent excellent question. As we all know, if if there's a spot where someone can drive, they're going to drive. So I I do think that's appropriate. Yeah, I'd hate to see, you know, that used as a a traffic lane for the residents of the building. Yeah, maybe we get a no vehicles allowed sign where that parking lot on the right side is.
True.
Okay, anybody else? Any questions? And just to jump off of Commissioner Torres's question, where that dog run is being envisioned, that's not, there's no egress there, correct?
There's no there's there's no change to 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 the egress of the building.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. All right, anybody else? Any questions? We good? Okay. Thank you. Counsel, is that your presentation?
It is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hands. If you are calling in and you want to comment on this application, please press star nine to raise your hands.
So you know, one public chairman, I motion to close the public session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Public is closed. Cam, I think this is yours. I'm not sure.
Yes, that's right. Okay.
You want to add?
Yes, so to also provide more context here, you know, thi- this building was originally approved in the late nineties. And you can tell by the aesthetics and and the design outside that it has a dated, you know, a dated architectural feel to it. This is providing for pavers. This is providing more ornate landscaping and just bringing it into the twenty-first century. But no, I nothing else beyond that. And and this does meet many of the objectives and goals of the redevelopment plan, and it exceeds our city's green area ratio ordinance, and I just want to put into the record, we have a request for a seventh condition upon a motion for approval, and that is to look at the placement of a sign where there is the driveway entrance for what I'm assuming is the loading and pickup zone for the lobby entrance. And we'll we'll look at a sign that we can place there to note for vehicle operators that this is, you know, not for the commercial space. There's a great clips and a liquor store on the ground floor retail there, and we'll we'll work on that in the signature plan. So beyond that, planning staff recommends approval. They're adding up a whole bunch of native species, which is great for our native insect and bird population. So it's it's a it's a plus.
All right, thanks, Cam. And I, yeah, I would appreciate if the applicant could work with planning on that sign. Counsel, do you have any objection to that?
We do not.
Okay, great. Thank you. So entertain a motion.
Here, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two two dash zero three four as presented to the board this evening with staff recommendation and conditions.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded for approval with conditions.
Okay, acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Lipsky. Commissioner Dr. Desai. Okay, Commissioner Ramirez. Okay, Commissioner Cruz. Okay, Commissioner Torres. Okay, and Chairman Langston. Okay, motion carries on in favor with conditions.
Thank you all very much for your time tonight, and Cameron, thank you for all of your help.
Much appreciated.
We appreciate your time. All right, let's move on to item eleven. It's case P two-two dash one-three-one is a minor site plan. Uh, it is a, I'm sorry, did I, uh? I apologize. I'm trying to get ahead of myself. Um, all right. Got a good pace going. I'm trying not to ruin it. Uh, I think P two-two dash one-three-zero is a conditional use for three-thirty-three Washington Street.
Okay, promoting James McCann.
God, I almost had a heart attack here. I thought you were gonna skip.
Yeah, no disrespect. Uh, I'm just trying to keep this pace going. I like it.
I have, um, I have two witnesses, Cameron. I have Ed Colling and a gentleman, uh, named Dave Lustberg.
Okay, promoting both here.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Staff and Counsel. Uh, James McCann from the law firm of Connell Foley in Jersey City, appearing on behalf of K three-twenty-one Washington Properties LLC. Uh, the property we're gonna talk to, about tonight is actually the sidewalk in front of the building known as three-thirty-three Washington Boulevard. It is block one-one-six-one-one lot two. It's in the Powerhouse Arts District Redevelopment Plan. Uh, relief requested is a conditional use approval to install a parklet on the sidewalk in front of the building as permitted by City Council Ordinance two-two dash zero-three-one, which was recently adopted by the Municipal Council as an amendment to the Powerhouse Arts District Redevelopment Plan. Uh, counsel, good evening. Uh, this is a notice case, and I did file my affidavit of service and publication with planning in advance. Can you please check it for me?
Thank you, counsel. I am in receipt of your affidavit of publication, proof of mailing with respect to the application at three-three-three Washington Street here in the city. All does appear to be in order. Chairman, we can mark it as A-one, and for everybody's edification, this is being presented as a conditional use, uh, application. The board may recall some time ago, this board actually reviewed the ordinance, which eventually became City Ordinance twenty-two dash zero-three-one. And counsel, not to steal your thunder, but essentially, uh, you're looking to put in the parklet for the benefit of everybody, and that's under the ordinance, and that will allow the building to have some additional, I guess, medical and office space, if I recall correctly.
Uh, that's all correct. It, once the parklet is installed, it will allow the entire building to be used as either office or medical office, or a combination of both.
So I don't know that we need both Mr. Lustberg and Mr. Colling, although I always appreciate a lesson from Mr. Colling. I guess we just need to see the parklet.
Well, why don't we start out with that? I will call my first witness, Mr. Lustberg. Um, he can be qualified, and then we have five slides, basically. We can show them to you. Two of them are the actual site plan. And, uh, and then we can decide if we need Mr. Colling.
David, I'll swear in if you can raise your right hand. You swear the testimony about to give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
David Lustberg, L U S T B E R G.
Thank you.
Mr. Lustberg, good evening. I believe we've qualified you in the past, correct?
Yes, you have.
Okay, and your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Native New Jersey.
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. You're qualified.
Counsel, let's mark this as A-two. We'll call it the Planning Board Presentation. It is five slides, and we can have it submitted after the hearing.
Absolutely. Uh, Mr. Lustberg, uh, take it away.
All right, so, uh, so I'm gonna walk you through this presentation. It's a few slides, and then I'm happy to answer, uh, any questions. Uh, thank you for your time tonight. Uh, I just wanted to make sure that everyone could see my screen. Okay, great. So, uh, so, uh, so, uh, what we were charged with here was, was constructing a parklet uh, at three-thirty-three Washington Street on the Washington Street side of the building. So what you see here is a location map to where we're locating, uh, the parklet itself. So this, uh, fuchsia color is where the parklet will be located for orientation. Washington Street is running vertically on the page here. Uh, just a couple of notes about the location. Uh, per the resolution, it was required to be located along Washington Street. Uh, setback at minimum of ten feet.
Just one second, per the ordinance.
Per the ordinance, I'm sorry.
Which, which you reviewed in, to prepare this plan, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, so it was required to be located, uh, a minimum of ten feet from the curb line. So you can see this, uh, setback here is, is ten feet, which I'll show you in more detail. Uh, and it was required to be a minimum of three hundred and fifty square feet. So this plan that you're looking at is the plan that was submitted as part of the application. Uh, so this is a, uh, you know, little bit more of a technical drawing for orientation. Washington Street here is along the bottom. Uh, what you see here is the parklet, and I'll show you a colorized version of this. Uh, but just to get some of the nuts and bolts down here, the parklet itself, uh, is set back this distance from the curb line to the parklet itself is, uh, a little over ten feet. And the width of the parklet is forty-three foot, six inches. The depth of the parklet is ten foot, eight inches.
So looking at a. As in excess of the minimum required, uh, three hundred and fifty, right? It's just about. Yeah, I think, right?
That's correct. So what you see here is a, is a, an Axon view colorized rendering of that, uh, of the parklet itself. Uh, so, so as I said, thi- this is the limit of the parklet here, uh, that you see here. That is, uh, just over three hundred and sixty square feet. Uh, the parklet itself consists of a series of benches, which you see here, which are met, which are wood benches with a metal structure. And they are backed by raised metal planters, uh, that are planted with, uh, native plant material, uh, consistent, uh, with the city requirements. Within those spaces are, uh, seating areas and tables. And, uh, per the ordinance, again, uh, there is a location for public art. So there will be a pad constructed here. Uh, that will be a location, uh, for public art. The base of the, of the, uh, parklet will be defined, uh, using, uh, concrete stain, uh, which will be, uh, applied, uh, joint to joint to help define, uh, the area. And, uh, there will be a sign located on either side of the parklet, indicating that this is a public space, uh, fully open to the public. And, uh, the, the parklet will be lit using wall-mounted sconces. So these, you can see two sconces here will be mounted above the parklet. So I think this really creates a nice little seating pocket, uh, for the community, uh, easily maintained and aesthetic. Uh, regarding street trees, uh, there's one existing street tree that you see here at the top uh, of the page. And then at the bottom, there is a tree pit that is currently empty. Uh, so as part of this application, we're going to plant uh, one new street tree, uh, within that, uh, existing tree pit, uh, which is located here. So the parklet itself will be flanked, uh, on either side, uh, with shade trees. As you can see here, just diagrammatically, the parklet is setback eleven foot, five inches from the curb. Minimum requirement is ten feet per the ordinance. And, uh, the ordinance also requires a five-foot minimum clear zone for pedestrians to pass, uh, which is here between these two white lines. That is five feet. So that, uh, you know, here's a view just showing the plan color rendered with that axon, just to give you a better idea of, uh, the relationship from plan to, to perspective. Uh, so with that, I think, uh, you know, that, that, that sort of covers it. Uh, Jim, if there's anything else that you'd like me to, uh,
Just that, Dave, the, the ordinance required seating, landscaping, planters, and trash receptacles, and you've incorporated all those things into this design, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, no further questions of Mr. Lustberg?
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Lustberg, the only question I have is, uh, regarding the lighting. Those lights will be operational, uh, twenty-four-seven?
I would imagine that, that we, we, we really haven't discussed the hours, but I would imagine that it would be, uh, sundown to sunup.
Okay. Um, yeah, obviously, um, if, you know, it's open to the public, uh, we want it lit during the night, so. We'd appreciate that. Um, with that said, I have no other questions. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question. This is like a public place, so who is going to maintain the space over here? And, uh, of course, there'll be dress receptacles also. Who is going to maintain the area?
Sure, so, um, hello, Commissioner. It's, it's Jim McCann. Um, the ordinance requires the owner to maintain all the improvements that you see on this drawing, and the owner will do that as part of the regular building maintenance.
All right, thank you, Doctor. Anybody else? Any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Lustberg. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And if you could, please, uh, take your screen share down.
Uh, if I could, uh.
So counsel, in light of ordinance, uh, twenty-two dash zero-three-one, uh, it's clear to me that this is conditionally permitted and naturally required in the event that the applicant wants to take advantage of, uh, the can additional use and be permitted to use the building, uh, in the manner previously described by you. It exceeds the requirement under the ordinance maintenance is gonna be by your client, the applicant and owner of the building. I don't believe we need to hear from Mr. Colling, Chairman, uh.
I think you probably just summarized his testimony, counsel, so, um. If the board, if the board has, uh, no questions or concerns about Mr. Lustberg's presentation, because I do believe he explained we need all the requirements. We're good, counsel. We rest.
Yeah, I agree. I, I I also love to hear from Ed all the time, but, uh, I don't think we need his testimony on this.
I agree, Chair.
All right, thank you, everybody. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. Anybody from the public, if you'd like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. I see Ms. Moore's hand up.
Promoting Catherine Moore.
Hi, Catherine, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing all right. I'll just swear in and be ready to raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you get tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name and do us your address, please?
Catherine Moore, K A T H R Y N M O O R E. I'm, uh, one forty Bay Street in the Powerhouse Arts District.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, good evening. We have three minutes for you.
Okay, just, uh, a few things I just wanted to kind of get clarified. Um, when they say the conditional use is gonna be brief, uh, office space and medical space, uh, can they also have retail on the ground floor? And, um, so I just wanna kind of clarify that.
Can I answer that question?
Yes, please.
Okay, so the way the, um, the pad works is, yes, we can already have retail in that space. So this, it doesn't prohibit retail, but it expands the permitted use to office and medical.
Okay, cool. I just wanted to make sure, because in the paperwork, it wasn't saying that, uh, retail could be on the ground floor. Um, and then as far as, um, the space is great that they added at the second tree. They're gonna replace that tree. Um, and, uh, I just had a quick question about the artwork. Um, you know, in, in other instances, we've had artwork, or we have a sculpture park that's over by the light rail, um, that has never had a little piece of artwork put into it. Um, just kind of what is the plan to get artwork put into that space? And will the city be ensuring that artwork? Will there be, um, money set aside to commission an artist to produce the artwork? Uh, or is this something that the city will have to, um, put in? Uh, is sort of a question. And then, of course, insurance, um, once the artwork is placed in a public location, will there be, you know, who's responsible for ensuring the artwork? And, uh,
So.
And is there a bike rack anywhere?
Uh, we don't have a bike rack. Dave, do we have a bike rack?
No, we don't have a bike rack currently.
Okay. Um, as far as the artwork goes, uh, the way the ordinance works is, um, the applicant is required to, um, procure the artwork from a, um, from preferably uh, a artist in Jersey City or Hudson County. Um, it's not a specific requirement, but it's a preference in the ordinance, I believe. Um, the applicant will try to get artwork from, um, uh, an artist in Jersey City and Hudson County. They're committed to doing that. Um, as far as the artwork itself, um, it has to be installed six months after. There's a TCO for the office or medical office space on the ground floor. So, uh, cause that's the only floor that's not occupied. So, um, the applicant will comply with that six-month requirement. I'm sure there's a condition in, uh, Mallory's letter. It'll be in the resolution of approval, I'm sure. And, uh, we will comply with it. As far as the artwork being in, once it's installed, um, I'm not really an expert on how this works, but, um, my client is gonna maintain the artwork. They'll choose the artwork, I'm sure. It'll have to be something that's weatherproof. We did give some thought to this. It'll have to be something that's weatherproof and can endure the environment, because it's outside. Um, but it's the applicant's, uh, job to maintain artwork there. So I guess if the artwork gets destroyed, they'll have to get another artist to replace it. When the artwork wears out, they'll have to, uh, find a way to maintain it. As far as insurance goes, I imagine that's something that gets worked out between the artist and the, the owner of the property. But I, I don't know for sure.
Okay, yeah, it's just, it's, the redevelopment plan isn't always clear as to like how artwork will be brought into the neighborhood, and, um, that's been kind of an issue where we have other places where art is supposed to go, and, um, you know, fifteen years now, we've had, have had no artwork go in place, um, in the sculpture park. Um, is what it's actually called in, uh, the redevelopment plan. There is no sculpture. So, um, it's great to hear that, you know, within six months, we'll have something there. Um, and, uh, that's, that's good news. There's a lot of, uh, potential for this, for this, uh, streetscape here. Um, just because there's new stuff going on either side of it. So this is a good first step. Other than that, I think, uh, you know, will the two trees be the same that will be in the tree pit? And, and to go in the second tree pit, and, um, the metal grating that is gonna, that's will surround it? Is that something that, uh, the current, um, uh, the city currently likes to have those, that metal, because sometimes that chokes the older trees? Um, is there another type of, um, uh, barrier that can go around the tree to, um, keep it safe, um, and not kill it?
Uh, so, so currently, uh, the, the plan is to have the two, to match the tree that's existing, uh, which is a London plane tree. Uh, we're gonna plant a second London plane tree. Um, as far as the, the treatment of the tree pits, um, you know, we're showing a tree grade where, i- if, if the city.
Yeah, cause they've been removed all over the neighborhood. Those, those grades have been removed or stolen. And, um, so there's been, uh, different types of solutions. Um, so it's just a matter of just making sure that those trees get maintained, and that's why they die. The trees, basically, because they get choked, and the, they're not maintained by the other, uh, property owners across the street on Washington. property owners across the street on Washington. So it's 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 the those kind of things are kind of a big issue. So I know, you know, we want to care for the trees so they have a long life and there's no electrical stuff above. So the trees can grow tall. They won't have to be pruned because of power lines. Okay, well, just as long as, you know, we feel like we're doing the the most recent thing that the forester wants for tree pits. And they approve of that. I just know that a lot of people aren't putting metal grates around the trees anymore. Or maybe a different type, you know, that that will be able to grow with the tree.
All right, Ms. Moore, we appreciate it. We're way past your minutes, but thank you.
We had some questions being answered during it, so.
Of course. No, I paused your time during all those questions.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it. All right, anybody else from public? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody else from public?
Nope, I see no one else, Chairman. So I move to motion close the public session.
All right, motion made and seconded. Public is closed. This is Mallory's. Mallory, you have anything you want to add?
I need to swear Mallory in real quick.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Mike, I missed your original.
You swearing any testimony you get tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Nothing to add other than we did provide a staff report with conditions. The main thing to note is that the last condition in the report is consistent with the last condition for the conditional use application, which is that implementation of the public art within six months of receiving a TCO for any fit out of the building that involves more than fifty percent of the building being used as office space, which is what triggers this conditional use in the first place. So additionally, there is just per Ms. Moore's comment. The standard condition of complying with forestry standards. So in terms of treatments over the trees that will be flushed out, you know, through implementation and and the CEO will be conditioned on you know, the appropriate treatments per the forestry standards being applied. So they will be consistent with the most current best practices that the city follows. Other than that, they're compliant with the other conditions and staff recommends approval.
All right, thanks, Mallory. And I appreciate that it says TCO in there. All right, I'll entertain a motion then.
Here, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two two dash one three zero as presented to the board this evening for approval with staff recommendation and conditions.
Second.
All right, motion and seconded for approval with conditions.
Okay, acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
I, it's great improvement to the area.
Commissioner, Dr. Desai.
Yeah, I like that the parklet is good for people to come and sit and enjoy themselves. I would vote I.
Commissioner Ramirez.
I.
Commissioner Lipsky.
I.
Commissioner Torres. Commissioner Cruz.
I.
And Chairman Langston.
I I think the first parklet we saw in the city was back in ninety-nine and I I thought it was a great idea back then. It's a shame it took a global pandemic for everybody to get on board. But I think this is a great improvement and I vote I.
Motion carries on in favor with conditions.
All right, thank you. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your time. Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, Mike, do you want to get one more in and then take a break?
I was gonna say, we can get Gerard in.
Yeah, I think this will be quick. All right, so we'll call case P two two dash one three one is a minor site plan for a signage application for one exchange place.
Promoted Gerard Pizzillo.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. How are you this evening? Good to see you all.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Gerard Pizzillo, on behalf of the applicant Oncology East LLC. This is a minor site plan application for signage. We did and we were initially listed on the October eleventh agenda. We didn't get reached, but I did provide notice for that meeting. I would just ask, council has received it and everything is in order from here.
Evening, counsel. I did receive an affidavit of publication proof of mailing. It all does appear to be in order. We can mark it as A1.
Great, thank you. Very brief presentation for you this evening. My clients Oncology East LLC recently leased a vacant storefront or vacant retail space in One Exchange Place. Board members are familiar with it. It's the Hyatt House on the Plaza side, the subway and Dunkin' Donuts on the the other street side. Our client or my client's building is initially essentially right behind the Exchange Place Light Rail stop. We're proposing two types of signage, primary building signage, which will be located along the entrance or above the entrance. That's going to be eternally illuminated channel letters, only operational during business hours. It's a medical office, so no more, no later than seven o'clock. It's probably five o'clock, but you'll hear you'll hear that. The other type of signage is wayfinding signage along portions of the existing window banks. And that is just adhesive material. Total square footage, we designed it in conformance with section sixty-eight of the LDO. This property is located in the One Exchange Place redevelopment area. So everything that you're, everything that we're proposing tonight meets with the design requirements of the redevelopment plan as well as the signage section of the land development ordinance. I have one witness. He is the sign installer, Peter Dawson from Lehigh Valley Solutions. He could confirm the dimensions of the signs. I think in our submission packages, it's pretty clear what they are or what we're proposing. But I will, with the board's permission, call him up if you want to hear it from him and not from me.
Sure, we appreciate it.
Okay, so with that, Cameron, if you could just promote Peter Lawson should be out there in the audience.
Okay, yep, got Peter promoted.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And for the board's convenience, I'm just going to share my screen and have Peter once he's qualified and sworn in testify as to those plans.
Counsel, in light of all your opening remarks, let's do it in a very direct confirming manner where we go through the sign square footage.
Got it.
Sign is which.
Got it, okay.
Just have him confirm that.
Okay, we'll do counsel. Wrong screen, sorry.
Where's your bank account, counsel?
Now, there's nothing in that, so don't worry. You didn't see anything there. You see the right screen now, right? Yes.
I think so. Okay, good. All right, Peter, I'll swear in. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give today is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
I'm Peter Dawson, D A W S O N.
Thank you.
Mr. Dawson, good evening. Have you testified before us in the past?
I have not.
Okay, let's just go over your background real quick and we'll get you qualified and hear your testimony.
Sure, I'm the owner of a company in Princeton, New Jersey called Lee Imaging. That's L E I G H. And we are seventy-five year old company involved in branding and imaging and signage and manufacture and install signs.
Okay, thank you, sir. I believe seventy-five years qualifies you, so please continue.
Don't don't be fooled. I'm not seventy-five years old. It's the company.
I would never guess a man's age. Don't worry.
Thank you. Thank you. So we've been retained by oncology, I think you called it oncology east. I know it as a sterile cancer care. And we have built signs for them in multiple locations throughout New Jersey and a couple in Pennsylvania, actually. In this particular situation, there are two types of signage. The first type or primary type is as Gerard indicated, it's an internally lit channel letters. They will be mounted. I think that the total sign is seventy-two inches by thirty-two inches. They'll be mounted to raceways that will be attached to the mullions of the building. The raceways will be painted the same color as the mullions and the channel letters will consist of the the a sterile star and the words of sterile and cancer care.
Pete, Peter, if I could just stop you right there. The you see the screen, right?
Yes.
Okay, and these are the plans that you prepared and we submitted as part of our application?
Correct.
Okay, and the sign that you just described, the internally illuminated channel letter sign, is that where along the top of the screen here?
That's correct.
Okay, and those dimensions comply with the redevelopment plan?
As I understand it.
Okay, and they also comply with the land development ordinance section specifically governing signage, correct?
Again, as I understand it.
Okay. And we also talked about this offline, but just for the board's understanding. Will this, what are the, how, when will this chat, when will this sign be lit?
The the sign will be on a timer and it will be lit during business hours only.
Okay, anything else with regards to the channel letter sign that you think the board should be aware of?
The only comment I'd make is it would be very similar in design and look to what the other signs are like on this particular building.
Okay, okay, I'm moving on to the wayfinding signs. Now, there's several banks of windows along this streetscape on on the existing building? Right?
That's correct.
Okay, and we're not utilizing all of those window banks, correct?
No, we're only using the lower sections in most cases.
Okay, and only three of the existing six full window banks, right?
Correct.
Okay, so on your screen right now, location one. That is on the window facing the Exchange Place Plaza?
That is correct.
Okay, and those dimensions are compliant with the land development ordinance?
The the maximal allowable graphics, yes.
Okay, and the total square footage of all of this wayfinding signage is a hundred and thirty-three square feet?
That's correct.
Okay, and the total glazed area of the entire bank of windows is over nine hundred feet, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we're proposing less than twenty-five percent of the signage area, the glazed area, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, and so now going down, so this is exchanged location one, right? So this is directing people around towards the backside of the light rail station?
That's correct.
Okay, and then going down to page two. This is along Hudson Street. So if I'm taking this picture, my back is to the light rail station, right?
Correct.
Okay, and these dimensions are are accurate and compliant with the plan and the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. And then the third space where you have this wayfinding signage is taking us back to where the primary building sign is, right?
Correct.
Okay, and those dimensions are compliant with the plan and the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, just quickly. This this material, can you just tell the board what the material is that is going over these windows?
The material is called window perf. It is very similar to what is existing now. It's a perforated material where you can't see in, but you can see out from the inside. Same material you'll see oftentimes on bus windows.
Got it, okay. Board members, I don't have any other questions. I think that satisfies the the requests that we're seeking again. We're not here for any sort of site plan approval. The use is permitted. We are in the Buildings Department getting a permit, you know, for the build out. But for this board's perspective, the only thing is that we need your approval for is the signage. And that'll conclude my presentation unless you have any questions for us.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Mr. Dawson, we appreciate it. I have no questions. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir. And George, can you stop that screen share?
Oh, yeah, my bad. Thank you.
No worries. All right, so if there's no questions, I'll open it up for public. Is anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application? You could raise your hand. And if you're calling in and you want to comment on this application, please press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody from public?
So no one from the public, Chairman? I motion to close the public session.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Public is closed. This is whose application? Tim? Tim, do you have anything you want to add?
No, that this complies with everything in the redevelopment plan and the area and signage is appropriate, given the other signage in the area and plenty approves the application.
All right, thanks, Tim. I appreciate it.
Chairman, if I may, and I, we did get him staff comments in the staff memorandum. There are standard conditions attached to them. Because of the limited nature of the application, I would ask respectfully, of course, for a waiver of conditions three, four, and five. We're not proposing any street trees, so there's no you know, installation of street trees prior to the prior to the issuance of a TCO. We don't have an architect of record to sign an affidavit confirming the building was constructed as approved. Again, you know, we're not asking for any sort of building approval. And then we didn't submit anything to engineering since this was just a signage application. So I know these are standard conditions. I did talk to my clients about them, but I just don't think they're applicable in this case.
I spoke with Mr. Pizzillo before this and I hardly agree. Don't apply in the situations that they were on the staff report when I completed it. So planning is no issues with Mr. Pizzillo's request.
Agreed. I have no problem with that either. So let's just stick to condition one and two on the staff report.
And no issues, no issues, Chairman.
Right. All right, thanks, counsel. All right, I'll entertain a motion then.
I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two two dash one three one as presented to the board this evening with staff recommendation of condition one and two.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded for approval with conditions.
Acting Vice Chair Commissioner Gangadin.
I.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
I.
Commissioner Ramirez.
I.
Commissioner Torres.
I.
Commissioner Lipsky.
I.
Commissioner Cruz.
I.
And Chairman Langston.
I.
All in favor, motion passes with staff missions number one and two.
Great, all right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Enjoy the rest of your night.
Thanks, counsel. You too. All right, it's seven twenty-four. Let's take a ten minute break, everybody. We'll be back at seven thirty. And Cam, if you could, let's get the team for the next application up and ready to go.
All right, yeah, we'll do that.
All right, thanks, Cam. I appreciate it.
Hey, Cameron, you there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so we have a bunch of people on this. I see you got Maxwell on and Matt Newells. So that's good. Those are two of our main witnesses. We also, but with with Maxwell, there's also Michael Colton, who might show up.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, so. And then let me see who else we got here. Also, Gabby Gornelli from Dresner might be on. She was handling things with Matt Newells.
Hey, Cameron, you there? All right, so let's move on to item twelve as case P two two dash zero nine seven is a preliminary and final major subdivision and preliminary and final major site plan variances for four hundred to four twenty Marin Boulevard.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Robert Vertabello from the law firm of Conne Foley, on behalf of the applicant Hudson Exchange Phase Two LLC. They are the owners and developers of the subject property, which I'm sure many people are familiar with. It's the Metro Plaza site, which houses the BJ's and the shop right. As a preliminary matter, this is a notice case, we pop, this matter was carried with preservation notice from the September twentieth meeting, but in an abundance of caution and as we updated plans. I also renoticed for tonight's hearing, both sets of affidavits were submitted and are part of the data portal. But I think for purposes of tonight's application, we'll mark the more recent affidavit and accompanying documents as exhibit A one, we're also relying upon a on presentation slides, one of which you see on the screen before you, it, the slides are primarily composed of of sheets that have already been submitted, but will mark the entire exhibit as A two, if that's acceptable.
It is acceptable, and Council, just for the record, our council tonight has to recuse, he has a conflict on the application.
Thank you, Chairman, I did notify both yourself, staff, and the applicant that I do have to recuse on the matter as I do have a conflict, so. With that, I'll step away.
All right, thanks, Council, we appreciate it. So, Mr. Vertabello, as is past practice with this board, I am comfortable moving forward. Been sitting in this chair long enough that hopefully I can handle this. But if we do determine at any point that we need to consult with outside counsel, we will put the brakes on and we'll carry the item until, you know, said time when we can consult with counsel.
Understood.
And that understanding, I'm totally comfortable moving forward. Matt, have you reviewed the notice?
Yes.
Okay, so notice is sufficient, and this application is in front of this board tonight, so let's mark that notice A one. And Council, you did refer to the PowerPoint that's on the screen currently, how many slides are in that PowerPoint?
I believe it's nine slides, hold on, no, it's longer than that, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I'd be disappointed.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five slides, I'm sorry.
Okay, so twenty-five slide PowerPoint presentation, we're gonna mark that as A two. And if you could just make sure planning staff has that in their possession?
Yes, we will do that.
Okay, thank you, Council, the floor is yours, go ahead.
Okay, again, thank you, everybody. This property, which is the former Bed Bath and Beyond site, it's located within the West Neighborhood District of the Harzamis Cove redevelopment plan area. As some of you may recall, we were here before you back in the spring regarding certain amendments that we made to the redevelopment plan to accommodate this development. Specifically, as this phase of the redevelopment includes the new proposed shop right, which will be discussed here this evening, some of the details of that. We also proposed upgrades to the street grid to be consistent with the current Jersey City bike standards and with the upcoming Marin Boulevard improvement plan. So the application that's here this evening is the implementation of all that that was discussed earlier. This application is also the culmination of over a year of planning and discussion, both with planning staff and with members of the community, specifically ownership and the development team have worked closely with the planning staff and have had over twenty meetings with various community groups regarding this development, most notably the embankment coalition, the downtown, the historic downtown special improvement district, the powerhouse arts district group, Harzamis Cove Neighborhood Association and Villa Berequinn tenant organization. Specifically, as noted on the agenda, the applicant anticipates development of the property, which in the redevelopment plan, this is referred to as development block three, which, as well as you'll hear from testimony this evening, precipitates the subdivision as well to match the development block with what or to conform the development block with what's showing in the redevelopment plan as we transition from a commercial retail plaza to a residential mixed-use development. But before you this evening is the proposal for a sixty-story mixed-use building containing approximately or containing eight hundred two residential units, five hundred thirty-eight vehicle parking spaces, four hundred thirty residential bike parking spaces, twenty-eight retail bar bike parking spaces. The shop right will be over eighty-five thousand square feet. There'll be approximately eighteen thousand nine hundred ninety-two square feet of additional retail and commercial space, there will be residential amenities and a portion of a publicly accessible plaza near the corner of Marin Boulevard and Ganjemi Drive, otherwise known as Sixth Street. As I noted earlier, the key to this development is the new shop right. The old shop right will continue to operate and function as it is, as it does currently. And once this is, once the new shop right facility is completed, operations will move over, so the goal is to have a seamless transition from the current shop right to the new shop right, which we think is a benefit to the city as a whole and to the residents in particular. The applicant and the development team have also worked closely with the embankment coalition. And for what we refer to in the plans as the embankment plaza, that provides for a landing area should the proposed embankment park extend across Marin Boulevard. The proposed development as as men as specified in the redevelopment plan also includes an extension of Provo Street, which will run north, south, and also Fourth Street, which will run east, west. Per the redevelopment plan, these streets will ultimately be dedicated to the city as public streets, they will be publicly accessible in the interim. However, as we did with Phase One and Phase One A, which is currently referred to as the VIVE buildings. We we requested and are requesting here again this evening a deferment of the dedication of those streets, as this is still an ongoing development and there are future phases to the development that still need to be built out. It's, it makes it more amenable to hold off on dedication until the project is completed. We're also in the process of negotiating with the neighboring property owner where the Wells Fargo Bank is located. The redevelopment plan envisions Provost extending and terminating at Ganjemi Drive. We're in the process of trying to effectuate that, the plans that will be presented here this evening do not show Provo Street extending all the way to Ganjemi Drive, but as you'll hear from the development team, the plans have been devised to allow for a modification, once that, what we're referring to as the land swap is completed. There are also a number of interim conditions that, again, the development team will highlight for the board's edification this evening, we're in the process of working with planning staff and the city law department to, as we do with Phase One and Phase One A, to have a developer's agreement, which keeps track of, for lack of a better term, all the interim conditions and maintains the obligation, for lack of a better term, to bring those interim conditions to the full conditions as as devised in the redevelopment plan, so that we'll keep track of everything. Also, the interim conditions and the proposed land swap, the the building has been designed to accommodate it, so once those issue, once those elements occur, we don't have to redesign anything. We've accounted for that as part of the design process, which you'll hear from our development professionals. As noted earlier, the application also includes a major subdivision approval, as I stated, the main purpose for that is to bring the development blocks into conformity with the redevelopment plans, as we're going from a retail shopping mall into more of a of an urban grid. I have with me our development team, starting with Maxwell Powell of BBB Architects, also have Matt Newells of Dresner Robin, who's the project engineer. We also have Andrew Kridlin and his team from OJB, who are the landscape design team. And Charles Height is our professional planner, who will give testimony as far as the deviations that have been requested here this evening. Even though the building, the street grid and the public spaces are all designed as permitted by the redevelopment plan, we do have, as noted on the agenda, a number of design deviations that are requested as part of this application. As certified earlier this year, those design deviations don't change the number of permitted units or permitted floor area, and so some of you may recall, we did certify that as part of the redevelopment plan amendment, and as a result, the inclusionary zoning ordinance is not triggered by this application. And with that, I know that was a lot of information to pass along, if there are no preliminary questions, we'll go into the presentation, I'll call my first witness.
All right, thank you, Council, yeah, let's get right into it.
Okay, first witness will be the project architect Maxwell Powell.
Good evening.
Hi, Maxwell, just swear in, if you raise your hand.
Sure.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
For the record, can you state, spell your name, please?
Yes, Maxwell Powell, M A X W E L L, last name P A U.
Thank you.
Mr. Powell, good evening, I believe we've qualified you in the past?
Yes.
Okay, and your license is currently in the state of New Jersey tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Great, thank you so much, and thank you all for for being here with us tonight. We're really excited to be here today to discuss, you know, the second phase of Hudson Exchange transformation, really, as this board may know, we've been involved in the site for over dozen years, working with the planning board and Jersey City planning on the redevelopment plan to realize the potential reconnecting an eighteen-acre super block with over eleven hundred parking spaces back into the fabric of the city, so what I'm showing you on here is is sort of the illustrative plan of the ultimate build out of of the redevelopment of back into the fabric of the city. So what I'm showing you on here is, is sort of the illustrative plan of the ultimate build-out of, of, of the redevelopment of of, of, of the site. You know, we're really excited about the transformation that's taking place with Phase One VIVE being completed a couple of years ago. And now with us looking at the northwest corner of the site, you know, in, in many ways, we're starting to see the city's grid slowly making its way back onto the site. And for us as a firm, these are precisely the projects that we get up in the morning for. They're transit-oriented mixed-use developments that connect urbanistically while making significant new open spaces and connections to the waterfront and, and the adjacent neighborhoods. You know, this site in particular, on the northwest corner, you know, really is a key component of, of this original planning vision, which unlocks the potential of the remaining phases, not just from an architectural or planning perspective, but also from a key programming perspective. So here's sort of just an overview of the project. You saw it obviously when, when Robert was, was speaking earlier. You know, when we started looking at Phase Two, there were a number of factors at play, but I think the biggest factor for us was really to create a new home for Shop Right at the base of this building and keep an important neighborhood grocer onsite and designed for the future. This was critical for, for our consideration, to keep a full-service grocer in the community as promised during the redevelopment plan process. But at the same time, we were trying to locate them in the base of this building on the second floor upstairs, right? So, so that we can free up the ground floor as much as we could for other active uses, whether it's retail or lobbies or servicing and, and all of those other functions that we need for, for a building to, to function properly. So the podium really consists of, you know, on the ground floor, retail at the ground floor, lobbies and residential functions, servicing, loading, all of those functions on the ground floor. The second floor is entirely Shop Right, sort of located behind the screen. And then there are three levels of parking above that on levels three, four and five. All of that hidden behind a really nice decorative, beautiful architectural screen on the podium. That then serves as a base for the residential building up above. So the, the level right above the podium is an amenity level that has indoor and outdoor spaces. And then the residential component rises up from there on the southeast corner of the site, set away from Maron Boulevard and really towards the center of the redevelopment area. So let's walk through some of the plans. You know, obviously, there's a lot of complexity with having Shop Right onsite and its interaction with the other uses in the building. So as a result, there are a few deviations from the redevelopment plan that we are seeking as part of this project. Most of them are a result of integrating Shop Right into the site. We'll walk you through all of, all of them through this presentation. But as I mentioned, with Shop Right taking up the entire footprint of the second floor, we were able to create a ground level that's much more active than if Shop Right was located on the first floor like it is today. So let's start on the, the corner where Shop Right's entrance is, right? So we start on the corner of Fourth Street and Provost Street. The little box here that's sort of indicated in, in pink is the Shop Right grocer entrance at grade. This is where shoppers who are coming in by foot would come in. There are escalators, stairs and elevators that bring customers up to the second floor. If we move just north of the Shop Right entry, everything in the orange color here is, are, is the residential uses. So we have, you know, twenty-four-seven lobby that's fronting onto Provost Street. There's a leasing office that also has windows fronting onto Provost Street. And then as we move further north, there's a small retail space that we're able to carve out. It's about twenty-six hundred square feet just north of the lobby, which could potentially be a restaurant that can help activate the street and the open space that's directly out of it. All of this, of course, fronts approximately fifty-nine foot wide open space setback that was part of the original redevelopment plan, planning process, which is, you know, really a unique and wonderful space to have in an urban environment. It's, it's not something you commonly find. And our landscape architect will talk a little bit more about that later in the presentation. If we make our way around sort of the, on Fourth Street, working away from the corner, the Shop Right corner entrance towards the west, you'll, you'll notice that there's a significant retail presence that turns a corner on Maron Boulevard. And we're able to maximize that frontage to really create meaningful retail on this site, particularly on the corners of this building. So this particular retail box is approximately fourteen thousand square feet. And while there's always a push and pull of the space to sort of make all different uses work on the ground floor, you know, I think the retail that we created is really intentional and really designed to be flexible and successful, either as a single tenant or multiple tenants. The ceiling height, for instance, in this space here is twenty-eight feet. It comes straight to the ground to the sidewalk level. The depths are around a hundred feet, which works really, really well for potential retailers. And, and as I mentioned, we also worked really hard to try to get retail on three of the primary corners of the building. As we move further north on Maron, this is where we start to see the internalization of all of the building's loading, mechanical and servicing needs for the project. This site is located in a floodplain, so there is no cellar level. We, we can't place any incoming services below grade. So all of our incoming services are located along the street. So some of it is on Maron Boulevard. There's a little bit on Fourth Street and there's a little bit towards the north as well. So these are all raised up above the flood elevation, but they're located on the ground floor. And then we really worked hard to internalize all of the loading for Shop Right, you know, which is sizable, as you know. You know, compared to the existing Shop Right store, which is smaller than the one that's being proposed now, the existing Shop Right has thirteen outdoor loading docks, trash and recycling along Second Street. All of that is happening outdoors. In this project, we are proposing all that happen indoors and sort of consolidating all of their loading and all the truck movements within, within the building itself, right? So all of the truck movements will be coming in off of Maron Boulevard. They would be backing in, doing all the loading and they would also egress out of Maron Boulevard as well. In addition, we have some loading reserved as well for the remaining retail as well as for move-ins and move-outs for the building. So that's located on this corner right here with access coming off of Provost Street to access that loading as well.
And Max, if I could just interject, that internal loading, that allows for overnight loading and deliveries as well because it's segregated from the rest of the building. Is that correct?
That's correct. Alright, so all of that sort of inside, you know, they wouldn't have lights sort of, you know, spreading out in, into the outdoors as well. For people who are coming by car, right? So whether shoppers come into Shop Right by car or residents of the building, they're accessing the garage along Provost Street and going up through an express ramp that takes you directly from the ground floor up to the third, fourth and fifth floor parking levels that are above, above Shop Right. So, and then finally, I think we were also successful in, in moving some of the incoming services on the northwest corner. I think this is pretty important, you know, that we were able to carve out a small retail space at this location. The retail space was actually a request that stemmed from a series of collaborative discussions that we had with the embankment coalition. We're really terrific in the recommendations for this corner, not just architecturally, but also in terms of the open space that it fronts. And, you know, I think we were able to navigate the balance that we had to make in terms of, you know, having functional space to, 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 to support the building, but also to have an active space that could be a cafe or other special use that could be fronting the, the future in blank, embankment plaza. There are also provisions here for art vitrines that are facing the plaza that could be utilized by the embankment coalition to provide educational displays or resources at this location, which again is important as it is, you know, anticipated that this space is the future landing spot for the embankment. Step up to the next floor. So let's take a look at the, the podium levels up here, right? So there's our two plans here. The plan on the right is the second floor. This is the future Shop Right store. It's about eighty-five thousand square feet. It takes up the entire second floor. If you're a pedestrian that came to the store on Fourth and Provost, you'd be taking an escalator and elevator stair up. You would land yourself into this entry vestibule and you would come into the store sort of, you know, through the parking section and then make your way through the store and you would come back out, pass the checkouts and you could either take an escalator and elevator down or an escalator and elevator up to the parking levels up above. The only other use that this floor shares is, of course, the parking ramp that you see here, which is connecting the first floor up to the third floor. On the left is a typical parking level plan. This happens to be the third floor plan that we're showing you. All of the parking is, is, is level. We have express ramps that take you from each floor to another. So there's no parking on any ramps in this project. So there are three floors of this. It looks largely the same. On this particular level, Shop Right has a vestibule as well over here. So folks who are coming to Shop Right would park their cars, come into their lobby here, take an escalator or an elevator down to the store and, and be able to access the store from there. The portion in orange is residential use at this level. So there's some sort of back post spaces that we've placed near our core. In this case, there are a couple of bike rooms. There's some common laundry facilities on, on, on this level as well. So once we get above the podium, which happens to be the roof of the fifth floor or the sixth floor, this is where we start to see the residential uses come up on this project, right? So the entire sixth floor roof and level is dedicated to residential amenities. So within the tower, we have a, a series of amenities like the gym and some lounges. But we're also able to create a one-story pavilion space. It's sort of this L-shaped structure here that sits on the northwest corner of the site. And one of the advantages of doing that is to sort of create an additional massing element on an otherwise very, very large roof, but also to use the building shapes to sort of create outdoor rooms and outdoor spaces, which is, you know, really exciting. So, for instance, the, the, the outdoor space on this roof is, you know, sort of reserved more for a year-round use, more passive recreation space that, you know, relate to the, you, the uses on the inside. Whereas the southwest corner has an outdoor pool that might be a little bit more seasonal in its use. But I think the, the key takeaway here is that we really want to utilize all of the roofscapes to the extent we can because we think having that indoor/outdoor environment is, is really, really unique and terrific. On the left is a typical plan of a typical residential floor. So you can see sort of the shape of the building is largely a square-shaped building with a central core. The east and west facades are sort of linear and sort of very refined and clean. The north and south facades actually have a small step in them and you'll see that we, we sort of treated the facade slightly differently between the east and west and the north and south. And part of that was to sort of create a little bit more of, of a break in the facade, create a little bit more shadow on, on the building, but also to create a few more corner windows, which I think is nice for these units as well. So sort of pulling it all together, this is the stacking diagram, which probably just helps give a better sense of, you know, how everything stacks up in this, in this building. So the ground floor again is, is Shop Right, retail, residential lobbies, loading, second floor is entirely Shop Right. Third, fourth and fifth is parking. The sixth floor is the amenity level with the outdoor spaces and the indoor spaces. And then the residential component goes up to the sixtieth floor with a small-ish mechanical transfer floor in the middle of the building. So what I'm showing you here are the four principal elevations. I'll zoom in just a little bit so you can see it a little bit better. East elevation's on the left, north elevation, which is facing Sixth Street, is in, right here. West elevation, which is the Maron Boulevard elevation, is here. And the south elevation is the Fourth Street elevation. So in terms of the architectural approach, it was really important for us that the building is authentic, simple and true to the uses that are housed behind the facade. This is our approach typically for projects and we think it's really important in a building like this. This is already a very complicated building programmatically and we just didn't feel it was appropriate to artificially add too many elements to the design. So for us, that meant using quality materials in a contemporary way, using a limited but warm palette and using transparency, solidity and screening to create a beautiful, simple and authentic building that would last beyond architectural trends. So the residential portion of the building is a hybrid window wall system with floor-to-floor glass panel set within a three-story banding. So what we've done is we've used metal panels to sort of band every three floors, which gives the building a, a sort of a nice scale. The amenities again are on the sixth floor, very transparent. Right here, this, this is that one-story pavilion piece that I mentioned in the plans. And we're really excited about that because we have sort of some varying roof lines. And I think you will see part of that from the street, particularly on, on Maron Boulevard and on Sixth Street. It'd be nice to sort of see an, an element that kind of pops up above that, above that podium. The podium itself is expressed by a perforated metal screen system. So that's sort of what I'm showing here in sort of this bronzy color as well as what's being shown in the gray color that sort of wraps around both Shop Right and the parking levels. And then when we get down to the ground floor, there's a lot of transparency where we have lobbies and storefronts. And for solid areas, we're using a neutral fiber cement panel that has a really clean and panelized look. You know, I think it is important to note, you know, when we set out the designs building, part of the massing intent sort of ties back to the original redevelopment plan concept, which is to sort of step up the building from the north towards the south, right? So sort of have most of the bulk on the southeast corner of the site. So in the east elevation, you can start to see that the building massing starts to step up. Or if you look at it from the other side on Maron Boulevard, you can kind of start to see how that massing steps up. And I think the architectural approach to it reinforces that concept. So there are a few deviations, as I mentioned, from the building design requirements that are in the redevelopment plan that we're seeking as part of the site plan application, which is in support of a building design that, you know, again, is authentic to the uniqueness and the complexity of this building and particularly trying to fit Shop Right into this site as well. The first deviation relates to the limited rooftop equipment that we actually have up on the roof. So just as, by way of description, the, the sort of taller rectangular gray box is the elevator bulkhead and stair bulkhead. So that's a thick structure that's up there on the roof. The mechanical equipment are these smaller rectangles that are shown right here and here as we go around the building. And it's sort of tight, tight against the, the bulkhead structure. So the RDP calls for mechanical rooftop equipment to be screened from view. However, we believe that since these units are not visible from the street level and because they are set back from the roof edge and low in height, we are not providing an additional screen here that would otherwise actually make the rooftop equipment appear larger because that screen would be closer to the building edge, right? So what we're proposing instead is to ensure that the equipment gets painted gray to match the elevator bulkhead structure and blend in. So that's for the mechanical equipment that's up on the roof. I will note that there is also mechanical equipment on a lower roof, which is actually right here. It sits right on top of Shop Right on the northern side. That is screen. We are providing a screen there because we recognize that that is equipment that would be seen if it wasn't screened. So this portion here, which actually turns its corner on the north and, and again on Maron, is a screen that is intended to match the look of the rest of this, rest of the screen. A second deviation that we're seeking is in the redevelopment plan. It, it requires typical floor-to-floor heights within the tower portion to be a minimum of nine foot nine floor-to-floor. We are requesting a one-inch deviation to allow for a nine-foot-eight typical minimum floor-to-floor height, which still actually results in approximately nine-foot ceiling height in the living rooms and bedrooms on a typical residential floor. This just helps us sort of fix the modulation of the building. So we're asking for that deviation as well. And then I think there, there's an additional deviation relating to requirements for Maron Boulevard to have multiple entrances. And if there is retail, to have clear-through windows. We believe that the intent of the code, that we meet the intent of the code where we have retail on the corner. So this is Maron Boulevard. We have retail on the southern, southwest corner with Fourth Street. And we also have that corner retail up by Sixth Street as well. However, for the portion that's in the middle where we have the mechanical rooms and the loading and the incoming services, these areas don't have windows and nor do we feel that it's architecturally appropriate to have the effect of, you know, multiple building false fronts or fake windows in that location. So, you know, what we're proposing is to hold the corners with glazed storefronts, highly transparent. But we're proposing a clean panelized wall in keeping with the rest of the building design in the middle portion of Maron Boulevard here. So let's zoom in a little bit more, which we put together a material board and indicated material use on a couple of the facades. This happens to be the Provost facade, right? So again, this is the Shop Right entry on the corner. The residential entry is right here with a canopy that sort of marks the entrance to the lobby, the retail that's just north of that. And then the servicing area as well as the entrance to the parking garage just further north. This is Fourth Street on the left and this is Sixth Street up on the right over here. So in terms of materials, we have vision glass in storefront at the ground floor. So that's, you know, essentially vision glass here and some metal, metal framing for the, for the, for the glass. At the residential entry, again, we have vision glass. There's a bronze-colored metal panel that's sort of in these vertical bands here that creates sort of a little bit of visibility and transparency through the leasing center. Just further north of that is the, is the retail space, which also has vision glass. And then what we have in between where we have solid portions, we have this fiber cement panel that comes in two colors. That's sort of lighter gray and darker gray that sort of continues along. And then it continues along on the other facades, including the north and west facade as well as on the south facade as well. One of, an, an additional deviation that we have is, is actually the canopy. So there is a entrance canopy. I'll zoom in a little bit so you can see it. It's a, it's sort of a horizontal canopy that comes out. The current proposal is for a six-foot projection in, into the Provost right away, which of course is also opening up onto that fifty-nine-foot open space setback. The design requirements limit the encroachment to two-foot-six for architectural elements and four feet for awnings. So we're asking for a deviation to allow us to go. So we're asking for a deviation to allow us to go to six feet. We feel it is important to have a scale of canopy and depth so that it's proportionate, not only to the scale of the building, but also to the landscape that it's fronting on as well. Above the ground floor, we have designed a panelized painted perforated screen. So that's what you see here as well as over here. So this panel system here is comprised of these two dark bronze panels. It has a circular perforation on it. And then as we transition towards the north, it's the same perforated panel, but it's in a lighter gray. And again, that's it's for us to sort of break down the scale of the panels a little bit, but it's the exact same panels that continue itself towards the north. And then this panel system will repeat itself on the south and on the west side as well. I'll show you rendering later on in terms of how we're actually trying to do it. We're looking at, we're placing the panels in a front and reverse orientation, which helps us get a little bit more shadow lines, a little bit more depth, which we think it will be really nice quality when the sun hits it as well. So this brings us to a few additional architectural deviations that we're seeking as it relates to articulation. So the first one is there's a requirement for retail uses over thirty thousand square feet to be masked by smaller retail uses. The only space that meets the threshold of space that's greater than thirty thousand square feet is actually the grocer itself, which is of course located on the second floor and is not wrapped by smaller second-floor retail spaces. We believe that the intent of the requirement is is really targeted for the ground floor, and because we were able to locate shop right on the second floor, we effectively were able to create retail spaces less than thirty thousand square feet on the ground. There's also a requirement for facade articulation through a horizontal banding line between sixteen feet and twenty-five feet of grade on the facades, as well as a separate requirement for first-floor blank walls to have at least one window per structural bay to suggest habitation. So on the issue of the horizontal banding, we believe we have that for the majority of the building. This garage screen and shop right screen, sorry, actually is proud of the ground floor plane. So there's actually a very strong horizontal line that's within that twenty-five-foot to sixty-foot range that carries itself, you know, for the majority of the Provost Street elevation, as well as entirety of the Fourth Street elevation and the majority of the Maran Boulevard elevation as well. Once we get beyond that, the the line is carried through the panelization. But in terms of a more distinct line, that line is 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 the break between the shop right level and the parking levels up above. And as a result, the location of that line is higher than the twenty-five-foot, sixteen and twenty-five-foot range that the line is. So we are seeking a deviation on allowing us to locate that line at different elevations. Similarly, on the Maran Boulevard side, because Maran Boulevard is several feet lower than the rest of the site, the line that is created by the garage screen is actually higher than the twenty-five-foot elevation by several feet as well. So we are also seeking that for the rest of the project. As it relates to the requirement for a window per structural bay and areas of blank walls, the requirements of the incoming services, as we've shown on the ground floor, and shop rights loading requirements on the first floor really don't permit the ability to have windows that would suggest habitation. And we respectfully believe it is more appropriate architecturally to be true to the building's overall massing and architectural articulation. So in addition, many of these areas, such as the north facade, are butt landscaping in our shield by plantings as well. So just moving up on in this sheet as well, I just wanted to call out some of the materials that we have on the tower. So again, the residential portions, it's all clear glazing. It's this this classic you see on the top left here. And then there's metal panels in a bronze color that you can see that's creating this sort of three-story super grid on the tower. We did the same thing on the northern facade as well. You'll notice that on the tower, it changes a little bit. So again, on the east and west facades, it's a planer facade with a very refined metal panel system on the north and south sides because of the step on the building. There's a little bit more shadow line. There's a little bit more glazing on the corners, and what we've done to offset that is to have a little bit more width and depth to the metal panels in the tower. So there, on this sheet, there's a couple of renders that hopefully gives you a better sense of what I was describing earlier in three dimensions. So up top here, this is the the view on the corner of Fourth and Provost Street, looking back at the shop right entry, which is the space here. The residential lobby is right in this portion here. There's a retail space right here. And then the vehicular access is right off on the end. Maran Boulevard is back here on the far-left side of the building. And I think what this this image shows you is sort of the the effect that we're trying to achieve with these with the perforated screen, which screens obviously not just the parking, but also shop right as well, which are all uses that don't, you know, aren't inherently sort of sort of public facing, right? So for us, it was important to create a screen that sort of diffuses that a little bit and create some visual interest on the building as well. So these are all panels that are exactly the same. Some are placed in a forward-facing, some are placed in a reverse-facing. And I think by doing that, we really kind of can pick up on a lot of the light and shadow during the day, and I think will give it some really nice visual interest. And then if I pan down to the second rendering down here, this is the view from Sixth Street and Maran Boulevard, looking towards the southeast. The embankment parcel is actually right here, and then right in front of it here would be the future Embankment Plaza where the embankment can land. And this really shows the importance, I think, of that corner retail space to really activate that corner. There will be, you know, in the future, a lot of landscaping along this frontage over here, but I think this is a very, very important element and to tie into the plaza. And I think lastly, I think this view also shows very well this idea of trying to step the massing up and using the architecture and the cladding to do that. You can see how the massing steps up from, you know, sort of the ground floor retail, the the shop right volume, the screen that's hiding the mechanical of the shop right on the roof, the parking screen, and then the further stepping of the building continues towards the south and towards the southeast corner. So so I hope I described the building design in a way that, you know, reinforces a high-quality design with high-quality materials that meets the overall intent of the redevelopment plan. But again, it's also uniquely calibrated to the design and the complex needs of fitting shop right in and program of this building. So really excited. Thank you for your time, and I'm going to hand it now off to Andrew of OJB.
Okay, Mr. Pow, thank you for your testimony. It was very detailed. I I don't know if these questions are appropriate yet. But since it was brought up already, you described the vision glass on the building. Is that a non-reflective glass?
That's correct. It's not a, it's not a reflective. We've got, it will have a low-y coating on it. We have to meet energy code, but it's not intended to be reflected for us.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I might be jumping the gun here as well, but you described the shop right signage. That's a backlit sign, I would assume?
Yes, the self illuminated sign.
Okay, and that would only be open during hours of operation, correct?
Well, yes, I think, but I think the current shop right sign is on all night, so we'll check on that, but I think the idea would be to keep it consistent with what's happening at the site now.
Okay. I'm sure we have time now, between now and the end of your presentation. Maybe we could get that answer. All right. Thank you, counsel. And Mr. Pow, with nine foot eight floor-to-floor heights, I'm assuming that the building has PTAC units throughout?
Oh, yes, yes. Yes, there are PTAC units. You can see them here.
Yeah, unfortunately, I can. Historically, not a fan of PTAC units, but, you know, I agree with the the space squeeze there. I guess it's a necessary evil. All right, those are all the questions I have right now. Anybody else? Any questions for Mr. Pow before he signs off?
Yeah, just Mr. Chairman, in addition to the screening, are there any other ventilation mechanisms, given the fact that you're going to have so many trucks and other loading vehicles in that space?
Yeah, so the parking area is actually is a is an open garage, so the the perforated screens actually do provide that. But the loading area, you know, obviously does need to be mechanically ventilated and will be.
And the other thing, just to Chairman, like I was talking about the signs. In your presentation, they're they're hidden, it seems, behind the trees. I don't know if you, you know, if they should go up or maybe the lights will shine through the trees. I don't know, but I like shop right and I like to see people driving down Maran or Fourth. Hey, shop right. Just a comment, not a question. Thanks, Chairman.
All right. Thanks, Steve. We appreciate it.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Is there, I didn't hear about any bicycle rack. Are there bicycle racks there?
Yes, there are. There are bicycle racks within the building for the residences, and there are bicycle racks sort of spread throughout the site. So there are bicycle racks, for instance, in front of the shop right entry. There's another one. There are more further north, and there are also some in the embankment plaza as well.
Got it. Thank you.
Counsel, did you want to jump in with something?
Yes. So as far as the signage, the current shop right signs are on twenty-four hours. So our expectation would be to maintain the same operation.
Okay, gotcha.
I have a question. How big are the shop right signs? And are they lighted or they are not lighted?
Yeah, they are self-illuminated. We do actually have slides for the signs later on in the presentation, and we can we can talk through the sizing of it at that point, but the sign is self-illuminated. Yes, internally illuminated.
I have a question for this pal. The two parts, though, and I know this is early in the presentation, so if it needs to be asked later on, I'm okay with that, you know, because there's going to be more information, but it's Chairman brought up the glass that we are, you're using a reflective glass inside the unit itself, the curtains for the windows going up as they go up. Are they all going to be uniform throughout the the building and on the apartments? And we don't have like all mix-match type of curtains going up? Know that or am I, I'm a little too ahead of myself?
You're not ahead of yourself. So the 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 building will be built with roller shades on all the units, so they will all be consistent.
They'll be consistent. Okay. Now, the loaded dock area, when we, it's the same entrance into the loaded dock for the as it is for the residential and for the people shopping at shop right on Marion Boulevard?
No, so the the shop right loading is off of Maran Boulevard. The parking is off of Provost, and the loading for the building, like for the residential move-ins, is off of Provost as well. So there's a there's a separation. There's no, there's no overlap between shop right loading and any other use.
So the people that are shopping at shop by, they're going to be going into that COVID side, right?
Yes.
That's okay. Track the trail is when they leave onto Marion Boulevard.
That's correct.
Not allowed to make a left-hand turn at all?
I think Matt does have an exhibit about this, and our engineer, civil engineer, can 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 talk through that.
You can answer that. Okay, I'll be later. Okay. And that's all I got for that. Thank you very much. Best job.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else for Mr. Pow? All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, who's up? Our next witness will be Andrew Cridlin from OJB. Andrew is not licensed in New Jersey. OJB is affirmed is. So I will be presenting him here this evening as a fact witness, not as an expert witness, but he can take the board through what's proposed from a factually with regards to landscaping.
Okay, that's fine. Let's get him sworn in.
Andrew, I'll swear in if you can raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, could you state your name, please?
Sure. Andrew, A-N-D-R-E-W, Cridlin, C-R-I-D-L-I-N.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Cridlin, good evening, and I'll just echo what counsel just said. You're testifying as a landscape architect and as a fact witness tonight. You're not licensed in the state of New Jersey. But we appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We're excited to to share the the landscape improvements. I think echoing what Maxwell said, you know, we think this is a really great project, and I think, you know, that starting off on Provost Street, you know, we provided improvements for pedestrians and bicyclists on sort of on the south side of Fourth Street and on the east side of Provost, kind of as has already been discussed as part of the streetscape improvements. And then we think that fifty-nine-foot setback creates a really great linear open space, kind of running north-south along the east side of the building, along Provo Street. So starting in the southeast corner, we have an open plaza really allowing pedestrians and those arriving via bicycle or by foot to to kind of get to the parking entry and or grocery entry, you know, kind of free and easy along that open plaza space. As we move north, we have a large kind of native planting area that separates that more retail use from the rest of the open space, and we have a residential forecourt there, also leading to the residential entry off of the sort of more sidewalk. And all of these spaces are connected with sort of these meandering pathways between the planted areas that you see there. And we'll have some renderings that show that later in the presentation. Adjacent to the the retail along the ground floor, we have this other open space area that's activated with movable seating and furniture and a lawn space that helps to sort of further activate and engage the open space and that retail frontage along Provost. And then the open space kind of ends or punctuates on this stepped terrace and large native planting area that really is a separator for pedestrians from the visibility of the the speed ramp and the entry into the parking garage. But obviously, as Mr. Vertebello said earlier, this design is obviously adaptable to accommodate, you know, future provisions should the land swap be effectuated. Moving along the north side of the project, we've provided a botanical walk that connects Provo Street to Maran Boulevard along the the north side of the building, connecting to the Sixth Street Embankment Plaza. You know, we worked with the Embankment Coalition and reviewed the ecological corridor plan to to make, you know, pointed planting selections and kind of arrange those in a way that that is in line with that ecological corridor plan. And then again, if the land swap is effectuated, we've already provided or accommodated a design that can be adapted so that the larger open space can sort of fill in that land swap zone kind of highlighted there north of the property line. Moving south along Maran Boulevard, we provided, you know, a wide streetscape sort of separating pedestrians from from the roadway there with a widened planting buffer, and then really allowing for adequate entries and exits into that large retail space on the southwest corner. And as pointed and I think questioned, we do have a number of bike racks, twenty-eight bike parking spaces throughout the site, you know, adjacent to the various retail points at each of the corners, both at the the northwest, southwest, and southeast corners. So I think the the next slide will show a variety of renderings in that linear open space. I'll start in the the upper right-hand corner. So that shows the grocery plaza is a large open space with concrete and unitized paving, you know, trees coming out of paver grates that really allow for free-flowing of pedestrians kind of in and out of the retail and parking entry, and then shows the connectivity north, both along the sidewalk to the right or the smaller pathways through the center of the space. There in the upper left is a typical streetscape view along Provo Street with a six-and-a-half-foot clear-zone sidewalk, and then these entries into the various open spaces described in the plan and kind of that native planting palette you can see described there. The bottom left-hand corner is that residential forecourt, again, anticipating movable furniture and seating, and then just a very adaptable and native planting palette that does sort of accommodate and create that botanical interest along this entire open space. And then lastly, in the bottom right-hand corner, is that terraced seat that does provide kind of that separation for pedestrians to the vehicular entry described by Mr. Pow earlier. Looking at, this is the the sixth floor plan, and I think the architectural presentation earlier described it very well. We have a variety of uses, both for outdoor cooking, socializing, Um, we have a variety of uses, both for outdoor cooking, socializing and sort of year-round use more to the northeast. And then that seasonal, um, active and sort of, uh, pool recreation use, um, there on the southwest corner um, of the podium space, um, you know, we have about sixty-two percent, um, green and that's sort of, um, accommodated with a variety of planting styles, both green roof there shown on the, where it says roof below, which is actually above the parking, um, on the fifth floor as well as some of the more botanical, um, and larger intensive green roofs, um, shown in the darker, darker colors there, um, throughout the plan. And finally, we'll end with sort of, uh, the hardscape, um, site furnishings and planting palette. So maybe this one's helpful to zoom in on, um, a little bit. So in the upper left-hand corner, we have the, the paving and hardscape, uh, material palette that's utilized on the ground floor, very similar and akin to the phase one. Material palette that was used as part of that project and, and sort of contextual to the neighborhood, um, similar to the site furnishings, um, both contemporary and the lighting contemporary in nature and kind of fit within, um, the, the design of, of the neighborhood and the phase one, um, project, um, that was discussed earlier. For the plantings, we have, uh, a mixture of oak species for the street trees, um, kind of creating a diverse planting palette um, within that, um, along the various street tree frontages and then the canopy trees throughout the linear open space or variety of maples, uh, London plane and Stuartia trees. And then we have a mixture of deciduous and evergreen understory and mid-story trees that provide that variety of planting, uh, textures and scales, um, to help with, uh, that native planting palette and to fit within the ecological corridors. Um, and then lastly, we have the understory planting, which is a simple mix of, of deciduous and evergreen planting, sort of native and nature and fitting within, um, some of our work with the, uh, Embankment Coalition, looking at, um, you know, plant species that are, that were present within the embankment and kind of finding, um, akin or, or exact, um, species to utilize here in this urban context. So that, that is the end of my testimony. I'm happy to answer any questions, um, as needed.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kridlin. Um, the, uh, maintenance of the streetscape, uh, that's provided by the applicant.
So, yes. Go ahead.
Okay.
Uh, well, I was going to say, yes, I, I believe the redevelopment plan specifies that, um, the applicant, uh, for this site, uh, will have to maintain the, uh, the landscaping.
Okay. Okay, very good. And, um, actually, uh, I guess this question would be for, uh, Matt Ward. Matt, you've, uh, reviewed the plantings. They're all in line with, uh, you know, city ordinance and selections that the city approves of?
Yes, they are. And, um, there is a kind of, and there was an expanded list, um, that was, uh, requested to be included into the redevelopment plan, uh, from the Embankment Coalition. And, uh, they have reviewed these plans as well and, and also agree that they're in align.
Okay, great. Thank you, Matt. Those are my only questions on landscaping. Uh, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Kridlin. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, our next witness this evening will be, uh, Matt Nules from Dresner Robin.
Man, I swear in. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
For the record, could you state your name, please?
Sure. My name is Matthew Nules, N-E-U-L-S.
Thank you.
Mr. Nules, good evening. Uh, always a pleasure. We've qualified you in the past. Your license is still current tonight in New Jersey?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Uh, what's up on the screen before you is actually it's sheet C three hundred for the set of the drawings that were submitted. This is kind of an overall site plan. Uh, a lot of, a lot of this was, was described in testimony already, but it gives the location of the site. The, the, the sort of gray area, the overall gray areas, location of the building, the darker shading. At the southeast corner of that box indicates the tower, uh, proposed tower element of the residential building. And then, uh, below that, along the, the bottom of that part of the box is the proposed segment of Fourth Street to be constructed with this development. And along the right side is the proposed segment of Provost Street, uh, which is to be constructed. As was mentioned earlier, uh, this portion of the plan shows Provost Street ending a little short before Thomas and Jimmy Drive. But ultimately that would be, uh, as part of a future application connected up through Thomas and Jimmy Drive as, as part of the redevelopment plan. I think that's, you know, additionally, this shows some, some rearrangement of the parking in front of the existing Shop Right store. Also, as was noted earlier, uh, we have put a lot of thought into staging and phasing this project so that existing Shop Right store can stay in operation till the new Shop Right store opens. So there will not be a gap in, in service for that. So that's an important element for the community. And this, this is sheet C three oh one from the plans. It's the site plan. It's zoomed in a little bit more on the building and site. I'll start with the upper left-hand corner, which was a little described by some of the others, but that's the, uh, Embankment Landing Plaza. She again provides the opportunity for a connection to the embankment should that happen, but also provides a nice landscape plaza on the north side, northwest side of the building. There's a, uh, walkway with some plantings and lighting along the north side of the building going to the right on the page. Right there, as you come around to that proposed turnaround, uh, Provost Street, um, there is the, uh, entrance, entrance and freeway, which was described by the architect team that provides entrance to the parking facility for both the shop right and for the residential parking, as well as an entrance for us, the smaller loading area. We have a few loading bays down there for move-ins and for smaller retail spaces to utilize. Running down along the, uh, Provost Street frontage, again, there's the large open space on the, on the left side of, uh, the street, uh, which is, which is part of the redevelopment plan. And we have constructed the street cross-section in accordance with the redevelopment plan with the cross-sections there on provides a two-way bike lane on the right side of Provost Street. Going north and south in that area. Uh, going down to the intersection at the corner, uh, you can see we've done a couple of things here. We've, uh, using some striping and texture, we've created the streets and the parking and, and such in accordance with the redevelopment plan. But we have provided a wider physical curb radius to allow for, uh, trucks that need to access the BJ site, not necessarily Shop Right. Shop Right, the older Shop Right has loading on Second Street, but the BJ's, uh, trucks accessing BJ's will need to come in through the street and make the turn to get over there. And so we, we, we left those curb radius wider in this temporary condition. Um, this intersection will be formalized in a future phase to form the hard curves and such. But we have provided all the elements, including a bike lane along Fourth Street as well, two-directional bike lane with crosswalks of bike and bicycle crossings at the intersections. Um, with, as was mentioned earlier on the left, we did coordinate the site plan drawings with the proposed Marion Boulevard improvements, uh, which has been underway with the city's engineering department. We've, we've, uh, shared that with them and worked with them to get that alignment set up and coordinated with the Marion Boulevard project. Um, there will be future coordination with the engineering department in terms of a traffic signal to be placed here. We've, we've already seen comments on that in the letter. We'll work with them to, to create that signal as, as needed. So, uh, in addition, in addition to that, uh, I did want to quickly talk about, you know, get into it on a future slide as well. At the end of Provost Street today, that will, that will eventually connect up to, uh, to, uh, Thomas and Jimmy Drive or Sixth Street. Uh, there, there are, you know, there are provisions being made there and you can see a little bit of a, a block starting to form, uh, as part of a land swap. There will be a, a new block formed to the right of Provost Street and will have the ability to connect through the Thomas and Jimmy Drive, uh, at the end of, at the end of Provost Street. As, uh, contemplated in the, in the redevelopment plan. Uh, and one other thing I wanted to discuss on this sheet is that the loading area for the trucks, uh, the Shop Right trucks will have access onto, onto Marion Boulevard. Uh, and in answer to Commissioner Torres's question during the prior section, it will be a right-in and right-out only movement for trucks entering that loading area. It has been designed for, uh, WB sixty-seven, uh, which are full-size tractor trailers. And, um, yep, there you go. That slide shows it better. We do, we do have modeling showing trucks entering, entering. It was a right turn in, uh, and then leaving is a right turnout. It is, it is a thirty-six foot wide driveway to provide for that movement. Uh, and what, once trucks enter the site, uh, it's fully enclosed, uh, and we do anticipate that loading could take place during the overnight hours because we have the ability to enclose that and, uh, ameliorate the effects of lighting and noise generated by the loading. Also, one of the things is that in the lower right-hand corner where we have the entry to the shop right, uh, which is the lower right-hand corner of the building will have some, some, uh, ride share or, or temporary loading zones in those few parking spaces on, on Provost Street. So there'll be, you know, short, short duration or, um, you know, for pick-up and drop-off kind of uses in that area. And we, we do show it. Okay, yep. But now this is sheet C four oh one, which is the, um, just the grading and drainage plan. And, and just some of the features of this plan is that we do have a proposed new drainage system, uh, components that run in Provost Street. Also run in, um, in, um, fourth, the, the proposed Fourth Street and they're, and they're picking up drainage from the road and also from several connections to the building. Uh, and they're connecting to the existing drainage system, which runs from near the corner of, the new corner of Fourth of Provost off to the right. It's part of the existing drainage system of the site, uh, has been designed to do that. Uh, the roads have been, uh, graded such that there will be above a flood hazard, uh, elevation and so providing access to the, uh, the buildings that are relatively flat plaza and such and all that being located at or above the flood hazard elevation to match with the state's rules. We do have a, a small portion of Fourth Street, which connects to Marion Boulevard, which will slope down toward the Boulevard to make that connection. If we can move to the next sheet, which is the utility plan. Uh, so the utility plan, we do have, um, we do have, uh, we do have, uh, proposed water lines within the street. So we do have proposed twelve-inch water main within, uh, Fourth Street and within Provost Street. We do have connections to the existing water system on site today, which is, which is a network of eight-inch pipes. So we're proposing twelve-inch pipes in both streets. Uh, we are proposing several new fire hydrants, uh, one at the, uh, Provost Street near the turnaround area, one closer on Fourth Street, close to the intersection of Provost. And, um, I'm sorry, it's four in total. There's, there's another one on Fourth Street at near Marion Boulevard and then there's, there's another one off Marion Boulevard. Uh, about two-thirds of the way up on the left side there. So the four new fire hydrants, there's two, two ten-inch water connections, one off Marion Boulevard. And, uh, the other is off of, uh, Provost Street. And then there is a proposed twelve-inch sanitary sewer lines in both streets, uh, which is an interesting aspect of this project because, because Provost Street will eventually continue to the south and connect up to where existing Provost Street is at second. We've designed a sanitary sewer system and to be as flexible as possible. So initially we'll have one connection to the building on the Provost Street side. Uh, and the other connection will be on Fourth Street. And currently we're proposing to tie the system into the, into the sewer system in Marion Boulevard. But once the development gets built out, it'll be flexible so that we'll be able to be extended to the south instead along Provost Street to keep all the sewage separated and into the existing separate, uh, sanitary system that exists going south along Provost beyond Second Street. I think that is, uh, completes the utility presentation. This is the lighting plan, sheet C, uh, seven zero one. And this plan shows the lighting levels that are being proposed by, uh, that'd be provided by the, the streetscape lighting along, along Provost and Fourth Streets as well as along Marion Boulevard. So along Provost and Fourth Streets, we have, um, goose neck lighting, their LED lighting fixtures. They're similar to the ones that are along Warren Street today, along the V Y V building. Um, and they will provide the same level of light. This shows that there's adequate lighting provided along both of those streets. Out along Marion Boulevard is the Jersey City standard. Uh, it's also, it's a post-top LED light fixture. It's similar to others that have been installed recently to the south of this site along Marion Boulevard. So it's consistent with those other, with those other developments. And I think that. Uh, so this is the subdivision plot that was submitted for the, uh, for this, for this application. Both this, uh, preliminary final site plan as well as subdivision plot. And so this does several things. As, as discussed earlier, it forms the, the proposed lot for this development, which includes the two, the two street cycles. Two street segments will be, will be separated and dedicated at a later time. So the upper, the upper left-hand block shown by the darker lines really encapsulates both the site and the proposed building as well as segment of Fourth Street and a segment of Provost Street up to our northern property line. Uh, what's also happened to the right of that, you see two, one triangular piece of, of proposed land as well as a rectangle below that. That is starting to form the next development block to the right. It's just starting to form that into, into the land. And again, we talked about the, the, the swap potentially will be combined with land from across the property line once those negotiations have completed. And that's able to kind of form a, a rectangular or almost a square block for future development. Uh, so that's what's, that's what's shown. We're sort of getting ready for that on the land that we, the land is included in this application. And then to, just to the right of that, you see existing, you see a piece of land that's kind of, kind of covering existing Warren Street in front of the V Y V building. We've got a series of little triangles and smaller shapes along that, that periphery there where it's being indicated. What's happening there is there's a, there's sort of some, some swaps of land back and forth to formalize that, that Warren Street parcel so that that can be dedicated in accordance with that redevelopment agreement that was, uh, that was, uh, you know, happened, uh, several years ago. Uh, the same thing is kind of happening along the, uh, just below that and to the right where we have a, another section of Fourth Street that was part of that, part of that approval. Uh, for phase one, you'll see again a few pieces of property kind of going back and forth to formalize parcels so that they can be dedicated to the city uh, for those two streets. So all that's happening in the subdivision plot as well. I think that concludes my direct testimony.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nules. Um, I do have a couple of questions for you. You mentioned the phasing earlier. Um, I just wanted to know what the timeframe is as far as, does the Shop Right come online before TCOs are issued for the building or is everything happening all, all at once?
I, I have a little trouble answering that directly. Uh, I mean, I, I know our, our, our overall plan is that, is that existing Shop Right remains open until proposed Shop Right opens. You know, that, that's sort of our, our, our baseline. Uh, but as far as how that corresponds with residential units or other, or other things, I don't know that I can answer that directly.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to coordinate that with the building department because as the mixed-use nature of, of the development, uh, they'll probably be on different time scales, but we'll coordinate that.
Sure. Um, yeah, that's, that's why I ask. The, uh, track the trailer turnarounds, um, I, I know it's obvious, but I, I just wanted to get it on record and, and stated clearly. Uh, all turnarounds are happening internal to the building, right? Nothing, uh, there's gonna be no tractor trailers backing into the site from Marion Boulevard?
That's, uh, that's correct. It would be making a right turn in, doing whatever they do inside, getting into their space. And when they leave their space, they'll be coming out straight out and making a right turnout.
Great. Okay. Um, the last question I have for you, I believe, is, um, you mentioned the twelve-inch water services coming in from different locations. Um, is there a single, water service room, fire pump room for the Shop Right as well as the tower? Or are they separated at all?
You know, let me do, can, can we go backwards two slides on the screen share? I think that'll get us there. One more. So. Okay. Zoom out on this a little bit. Looking at it on my screen at the same time. Um, they are, no, not necessarily. Let's put it this way, there, there's one service coming in off Provost up, up near the driveway. It's hard to see. It's a thin line there. It's, it's a W in it that goes through the trees. That's one of the two, water, water services. It's a ten-inch pipe and there is a water room over there. Accommodate that. And then almost, almost directly across on the Marion Boulevard side, you see another line that says, you know, the little tag on it. That's a ten-inch water line coming into another water room on that side. So I don't know that they're separated just for Shop Right and for everything else. I don't think they are actually. Uh, but that's, that's more of a mechanical question. It'll get worked out as we go through panel design.
Okay, understood. Um, that's it for me. Anybody else for Mr. Nules?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, how many emergency exits are there in the shop right? Uh, if there is some kind of emergency?
That is something I'd have to, I'd have to refer back to Mr. Powell, I think. If that's okay.
Yeah, I believe there are four exit stairs. So it's designed for the capacity that is, you know, compliant with the building code.
Anything else, Doctor?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Powell, just to get a little more clarification. Those four egress stairs out of Shop Right, are they the same? Egress as the tower or are they separated?
One of them shares it, but all the other ones are separate. So you can see there's one here, there's one here. Sorry. We share one here. There's another one here. Gotcha. And then and then they also have an open stair as well. So it's actually five, I think technically four egress stairs. And a fifth convenience stair.
Okay, that fifth open stair, that. Goes what from the lobby up to a mezzanine area?
It's from the lobby to this to the shop right level on two.
Okay.
It's just connecting the two floors. Yep.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Any questions for Mr. Knowles? Eddie, I see you talking, but you're you're muted.
I have a question for Mr. Knowles. Picking back off of the tractor trailers again that. Chairman last week spoke about. You mentioned that they come in making a right hand turn and leave making a right hand turn. That's right. If they're drawing though, you show. On that draw, it shows like if they were making a left hand turn. And yeah, here on that joint, the C three eleven. Are they turning? Out of there?
Okay, because it it should because of the swing of the truck, you know, so it's the one coming north to make a right in. He swings all the way across the driveway to the far side. And then the truck leaving does the same. Yeah, they're conflicted. They don't. They couldn't do it at the same time, right? So it's what one coming in and one going out, but they're they're both making right turn movements.
And then. Engineer, had they had they talked to you or have you discussed maybe a traffic light in that section there where?
Yes, yes, there will be. There will be a traffic light at 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 the end of fourth street. Down below, there's a traffic light there. We've had preliminary discussions with them. We do have a review letter from them and. That'll be it, you know, as we move ahead.
Well, we did. There is a traffic light there now. It's just.
Just below there. The the traffic light is right where it's being pointed just below there now. So this is this will be. We say it's reconfigured, but really it'll be a new light and you all want to be taken out. And that's how it'll be handled in terms of phasing. But yeah, there'll be it'll be a light there.
And no traffic that we have a traffic light at six feet. There will be no indication with a loaded darkness.
Correct, but they will be, I think. I think if I remember correctly to the letter that we did receive from the transportation department. There will be delineators on the middle line to keep trucks from making a left. So really it'll be. Sort of forcing that right hand turn movement and keeping keeping things kind of moving in the right direction.
Mr. Torres, if I may add too, so there is like a a slip lane for buses north of the light right now. And that's all moving south of the new fourth street entrance. And you can kind of see that there too. So they're going to be blocking off. That old entrance and reconfiguring everything to this new fourth street.
And that's going to happen. In a in in certain phases of the project.
As part as part of this this phase.
As part of this face.
Yeah, correct. Right. As we start building, we'll have the old lights still operating, people still coming in and using shop right. But as. As we get to this final phase, we've actually proposed a little parking lot in front of the old shop right. That's the at the lower. Part of the sheet there. So where the driveway is today, that'll become a parking lot. To serve shop right, that'll still be open right before the the proposed building opens. So it'll be a phase process as that happens. Kind of similar to what we had at the building on the other side where. Where we realigned fourth street on the other side of the project when we opened the 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 second B Y V tower. You know, we had the old alignment and we built a new one and then and then opened it up.
Now, is this the the whole the whole site? And the whole parking area for BJ's or the shop right? It's all the same developer, right? They planned it to. Fix up the BJ side a little more presentable so that people, because you're going to be taking almost forty percent of the parking spaces. That exists now for the shop right, right? When this part as this project goes forward.
Correct. Ultimately, this project is is on is on well, this part this project is on the. It starts on the Bed Bath and Beyond building. That's that's closed down already, right? It's there. It is occupying some of the shop right parking lot. So as we build this one, the new shopping right has the new shop right has new parking above it and in the building has been described.
Yeah, but.
But the BJ's is going to remain in operation and. And they'll still have the parking that's left, which is shown on the right side of the sheet here.
I'm just looking into the and and the fact that as the old shop right is still in existence. As of right now. That parking lot stays full anyway. You know, even with Bed Bath and Beyond, not there, when you go shopping at shop, right? A lot is full. So when you get back by BJ's. It's not, it's there's a lot of stuff in the way. There's tractor trailers there. There's things in the in in the center. I was just wondering seat boxes. I was wondering if they do plan to make. A more presentable for people to park in that section too, since no, they're going to no longer have parking over here.
Yeah, I I I hear what you're saying and I and I that's something I I can't speak for the ownership, but but yeah, I think that we would have to straight, you know. Organize that as best we can and I try to add some parking spaces there on that side. There is a whole row of parking along the back of BJ's and shop right or BJ's at least.
Because I think if they shift it, you have enough parking for both. You know, you know, to fit anybody comfortable as the project moves forward, you know? Yeah. This is a a comment that I wanted to make on the pocket situation, but you're taking a large percentage of the pocket. Okay, and the tractor trailers go smoothly left. Right and right. Okay, so thank you very much, Mr. Knowles.
I have a question. So they are not going to close the present shop, right? They are going to build a. A new one first and then close the all the old one.
That's correct.
Of course, people will be happy.
And just to get back to the BJ's parking, I mean, we we still have lease obligations with BJ's. There'll be adequate. Parking to meet the demand at BJ's and obviously as we transition. You know, steps will be made to to make sure that it's still a a serviceable environment.
Yeah, it's a great question, Eddie. This probably will be the only time you'll ever hear me say this, but I do think we need to maximize parking at this point until the next.
Yeah, you're going to be in the holiday season and that shop might stay very busy.
Yeah, no, obviously, it's it's always been. And yeah, we do need to maximize parking until the new shop right comes online with the parking. All right. Anybody else from Mr. Knowles? All right. Thank you, Mr. Knowles. We appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move along to our last witness this evening, which is our professional planner, Charles Height.
Great. Okay, thank you, counsel.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
I can hear you.
You can, yes.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state your name, please?
Yes, Charles Height, last name spelled H E Y D T.
Thank you.
Mr. Height, good evening. Always a pleasure. Your license is current tonight as a planner?
Good evening and yes, it is.
Okay, great. Thank you. You're qualified again.
Thank you. I will get into my testimony. As far as it relates to planning, we are in the Harpsmith Cove Station redevelopment plan area. We are in the West Neighborhood District, as was mentioned earlier by Mr. Vertabello. This board did see a series of amendments to this redevelopment plan that really instituted. A new street grid or revised street grid and the. Street streets surrounding the the proposed block in question, block three. The deviations that I'll be discussing tonight are really mainly related to the design of the building. The architecture. The, just to piggyback off of Mr. Knowles' testimony, the deviation with respect to. Vehicular access is is referenced in the curb cut along Marion as well as along Provost. The plan currently only permits a maximum curb cut width of the driveway with twenty five feet in both of these locations. It's approximately thirty six feet. And that's really been coordinated with. The project engineer and the project traffic engineer as well as city traffic and and city engineering. To allow for the appropriate turning movements out of both these. Locations for the anticipated loading vehicles, the tractor trailers. So. That's that's important parcel of the function of of those driveways to accommodate those those uses. That's the only civil or site design deviation being requested. Mr. Powell did walk through seven of the what we'll call architectural design deviations. That really mainly related to the facade and massing elements of the base as well as some of the. Floor to ceiling heights and and mechanical screening. So I won't go into those details because I think. The board really has a good handle from Mr. Powell's presentation. What we did want to cover here tonight is a little bit more focused in my testimony on the signage. I know there were questions earlier. We are proposing signage for essentially three elements of the proposed building. The main residential lobby, the shop right as well as the main residential parking entrance. All the other retail spaces, we're expecting signage to be proposed as at a later date. Which will either conform to the plan's requirements for commercial signage. Or if needed, there'd be a subsequent signage application. For any specific retailer. So just just so the boards are aware, tonight, what's only being proposed is what's shown on the this exhibit. Which I'll walk through now. The main sign that will be the residential lobby sign is located above the main canopy that was mentioned earlier. We've labeled this as name ID. It will obviously have the name of the building for for proper identification. This is the main lobby of the structure. So the 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 proposed sign has been scaled in consideration of the main entrance, the size of the lobby. The fact that it sits upon the canopy as well as within the overall visual aesthetic that you're seeing in this this facade. So. For residential signs within the plan, there are two aspects regulated. There is a size requirement of a maximum of fifty feet as well as a letter height of eighteen inches. That is really intended for one particular entrance. Possibly in a series of of different entrances for residential uses. In this instance, this is the only residential entrance, the main entrance, the along Provo Street. So to work in concert with the aesthetics, what's being proposed here tonight is a total of one hundred square feet. And the letter height is actually fifty one inches. So that's the deviation in in specific dimensions being requested. But again, the design of this sign is working in concert with with the overall aesthetics of the main lobby. There was a question earlier on on materials and lighting, so I'll just cover that now for this sign. This is an aluminum sign, a painted aluminum. There will be internally internal illumination along the sides of the sign, which will give an image of of a halo lit or or side lit. Presence at night and obviously during the day, there will there will just be the the visual of the of the sign itself. We can move to the shop rate sign. So shop rate sign obviously is a commercial use for the project. Science here is regulated for commercial uses. The requirements are a little different. We are proposing a. Shop right sign in similar scale to the existing shop right signs located on the existing facility, one at the. Southeast facade in this location and the second on the southern. Southern elevation along fourth street in in that location being identified now. In both of these locations, we do need deviations with respect to, again. The area of the sign as well as the. The the actually just the area of the sign. In this instance, commercial signs are regulated based on percentage of overall storefront in terms of area. Where maximum of ten percent is permitted for each retail storefront. In this case. Obviously, Shop Right is the main tenant of the building, occupying the majority of the second floor in terms of retail space. So we wanted to provide the anchor tenant the visibility as well as identifying the main entrance, which is out this southeast corner of the building. The proposed signage sign along Provo Street is. Two hundred and seven square feet, actually both signs are two hundred and seven square feet. But in terms of percentages, which is how the plan regulates it, the Provo sign is approximately nineteen point six percent. And along fourth street, the percentage is thirty one point one percent. Again, that's the ratio of the size of the sign to the square footage of. The storefront in terms of the width and the height. The same rationale that we've applied with the retail residential signage is here. It's it's the main entrance for the anchor tenant. The the size of the sign works in harmony with the overall scale of the building and prominence, the visibility at the main entrance for for shop right. Lastly, we have a deviation with respect to the parking entrance. Parking facilities are actually required. To. Propose two aspects, one required to provide the internal international parking symbol. As well as not have a maximum square footage of ten square feet. In this instance, if we could just zoom in, we we are proposing parking to be written out in the English language in similar. Materials and design as the main lobby entrance. So it's a little bit cohesive with the the main, the residential lobby signage. But again, this is not the international parking signage. It's just the name written out. It does comply with the ten square feet in signage, so it doesn't, it's not, there's no size issue related here. Those are the three signage deviations being requested in terms of. What we refer to as furthering the goals and objectives of the master plan. We truly believe that this development of this block. Further advances is advances every objective of the redevelopment plan. There are sixteen identified. And they run the gamut of instituting neighborhood scale, mixed use, vibrant development. Creating a street network, installing new city grid, city blocks in this neighborhood. All the way through improvements to streetscape and vehicular circulation. So again, we've worked really in concert with. City planning, city engineering to address a lot of the functional issues of the site. As well as Mr. Powell mentioned, the transition of relocating the shop right and and the loading being internal to the project. Is is a is a practical benefit with this design. Just really quickly, just to. Cover a few of these golden objectives, the redevelopment plan calls for the implementation of traditional neighborhood development techniques. For a unique inner city location. Again, we're trying to scale the pedestrian. Frontages to a more urban, walkable neighborhood, Provost Streets, that main activity. Frontage where we have a variety of commercial uses, plaza areas and whatnot. We are also promoting pedestrian access, circulating the whole whole property. Goal two, to encourage development. That is compatible carry character of the adjacent historic resources while providing for a mixture of uses. And intensity of development that will allow for self sufficient and vibrant new community serving as a model for health and urban growth. We're hitting that on the head. Obviously, the main activity centers are internal to the overall redevelopment area along Provost. And fourth street and there's there's a little bit more of a calmer, more more just pedestrian oriented. Intent along Marion as well as the north side of the building. Goal four is to provide for an intensity of development suitable to serve the implementation of infrastructure improvements necessary to support the dense development grid pattern and spatial form necessary. Necessary to support the dense development grid pattern and spatial form necessary to this downtown. This is the essence. Of the overall whole block redevelopment, um, where we are instituting more of a downtown walkable uh environment. It is dense. We have the residential tower above the mixed use podium. The last goal that I'll mention, and again, there are sixteen that I think we've referenced, but the last goal I'll mention is. Uh, goal five to encourage innovative mixed use and multiple use blocks of development. Uh, and that's being achieved here clearly with with retaining the shop right and providing for the additional retail locations in in the overall mixed use. Commercial residential development. So in terms of the zone plan, zoning ordinance and the redevelopment plan, I think we are. In lockstep with the golden objectives, uh, and I don't see any impairment here, eh even withstanding the. Deviations that are being requested. Uh, with respect to insane uh impacts to the general welfare. The board has already asked questions um that we've asked ourselves and we've coordinated with city planning. So I'll just. Reiterate a few of those that were covered tonight. Terms of the massing and the design, um, we've worked with the architecture team. Uh, to really, while we are requesting deviations, work with. Modern architecture advancements in terms of uh the materials, massing of the building. Uh, providing the appropriate transparency for retail storefrontages. Um, to really break up the overall mass of the building and bring it down to a pedestrian scale. Um, with respect to parking, loading, uh, we've worked with with the. The city agencies to uh really advance some of the. Circulation, isolating the cert- the loading circulation to Marin for. For uh the commercial retail uh reach it retail loading component. Um, and not having that be introduced to the overall new street grid being installed, um, as well as the 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 new uh. Light uh that will be installed at at Fourth Street and Marin. Um, other circulation elements that we've worked with, um, obviously installing. The pedestrian sidewalks and pathways surrounding the property, um, but also implementing the strategies of the Jersey City Bicycle Master Plan. Um, that are all being uh incorporated in this overall design. Um, and are required in the redevelopment plan as well as the the bicycle master plan. Um, and and lastly, with respect to the signage, uh, I know the the board is concerned with the impact of signage. These signs are very similar in kind with the existing signage on stock shop right. Um, they're internally illuminated. They're not blinking. There's no external direct uh signage light being cast. Um, and I should also note that we've we've located them in locations that are internal. To the overall redevelopment area. They're not along Marin or or north of uh Marin along Sixth Street. So. Um, this is more of an intense urban neighborhood. Um, so you would, it would be uh appropriate to have have uh signage um internal to that to that neighborhood. Uh, as well as the the proposed residential sign and the parking sign. That's my direct testimony. Uh, I think all the the deviations being requested are justified, um, wherein the benefits. Do outweigh the detriments um in in the in this case.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Height. Um, as always, very detailed. Uh, I have no questions for you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate your time.
My pleasure, Mr. Langston.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our uh direct uh presentation. Uh, at this point, uh, we'll answer any questions that. Either the board or members of the public have.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll open it up for the board one last time. Does uh anybody else have any questions they feel were unanswered? That they still have before we move forward? All right, thank you guys. Um, Mike, do you want to take a break before we open up public or do you want to uh?
No, I think tonight I need just five minutes before we go.
Okay, yeah, let's uh, let's take a five minute break, everybody. It's nine eleven right now. We'll be back at uh nine sixteen. We'll open up public. All right, could we come to order again, everybody, please? All right, Mike, we got you back. Good. Um, all right, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. I see one up already. If you're calling in and you want to comment on this application, please press star nine to raise your hands.
Um, sorry, I I just want to know, do you be able to go to item number fifteen on your agenda tonight? Is it about um three sixty-two, six-three?
Sure, um, I don't think we're gonna get there. We have a uh. A policy where we cut off any new testimony at ten o'clock. And. Yeah, we have a few items still ahead of you there. I don't think we get to Sixth Street tonight.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to bother you.
No worries, no worries. Thanks for hanging in there. We apologize and uh. I will assume we'll see you in two weeks, or I'm sorry, three weeks. Um. November fifteenth, I think, is our next meeting. Just double check that. Guys can all just watch me fumble with my phone for a little bit. Yeah, November fifteenth is our next meeting. Okay, once again, anybody from public, if you'd like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, press star nine to raise your hands.
We have a phone in and uh they are permitted to talk. They need.
Okay, great. You said star six to unmute, Cameron?
Yes, I was about to say that. Uh, to the phone caller, you need to press star six to unmute yourself. There we go.
Good evening. My name is S D. I'm doing fine, thank you.
I just wanna swear you in before you speak. Uh, do you swear any testimony you get tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I affirm.
And uh, I'm sorry, could you say your name one more time? It's by your last name.
B I R N.
What was your whole name?
First name is S D.
And what's your home address?
Nineteen Patterson Street.
From Jersey City?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, good evening. Uh, we have three minutes for you.
Uh, this is gonna take much more than three, and I did not come originally for this. So let me start fast. First of all, with that particular plan for shop right, how many entrances are they going to have for cars? How steep is the ramp? Uh, people do not want to go to a second floor. Look at their own. They have the people mover and that breaks down all the time. The elevators break down. It's not a good idea to have any kind of grocery store or supermarket on the second floor. And it's also at a flood zone. And as for the apartments. Uh, how many pools are they going to have that uh need extra? How much water? We only have, if I'm not mistaken, one reservoir. I mean. The uh board keeps to, keeps allowing a lot of big buildings coming into the city. We're gonna be losing our municipal eh situations like the water. We have to have a more electric coming into the city. You're not allowing for that, and the roads are not that good in that area either. How many entrances and exits are they going to have into that building just for cars? Then out to the streets. If you have an emergency, you're gonna have a lot of problems. Hello?
I I'm just trying to get all your questions down, ma'am, and we'll get those uh answered for you.
I tried to speak as fast as possible.
Okay, those are your questions?
Well, yeah. These are my concerns. You'd, I don't think they're gonna have enough parking. And and going up a steep ramp, you're gonna have a lot of accidents. Coming down, if somebody doesn't have their brakes, you've got a problem. And how many entrances and exits will they have?
Okay, well, we're gonna get all these questions answered for you, ma'am. I'm just trying to get a list of questions from you. Okay, counsel, do uh, do we want to address some of these?
Certainly, and I I can also recall uh Maxwell Powell, the project architect who can answer some of these. Um, as far as the municipal utilities, we have been working as every development in the city with the uh Jersey City Municipal Utilities Authority. Uh, so we have reports that are submitted as part of the application, which will dr- which address uh demand scenarios. Um, as far as entrances at for cars, I believe the testimony was, there's the the one. Uh, driveway um off Provost uh for the shop right facility. Uh, but again, I'll have uh Maxwell, if you could just um confirm that, please.
For yes, there's one access point for the cars that are gonna be parking on the third, fourth, and fifth floors. Um, the ramps are as per code, so they start at seven percent uh slope at the blends. And at the steepest part, they're fourteen percent. Um, there's nobody walking on these ramps. These are two-way ramps that are extra wide. I think they're thirty feet wide, actually, uh, to get up and down. There's no parking on any ramp, so there's no issues with. You know, someone trying to get up and down and the car backing out, right? It's just a straight vehicular movements. I believe there was a question about the flood zone. The entire site is raised up above the flood elevation, in fact, an additional nine inches. Um, so all of the entrances to uh the lobby, the grocer. The retail on Provo Street is all raised above the flood elevation for the retail that's on the corner of Marin Boulevard and Fourth Street. That does come down the grade, but we do have flood walls planned as part of the project to provide the dry flood proofing for those retail spaces.
One other thing, uh, we just want to emphasize is we've been working very closely with shop right to design this facility. Uh, so its location on the second floor does fit within shop right's uh business model from what we've been working with. Um, and we hope that that has a uh addressed uh some of the questions that were raised.
Okay, also, when you follow up to that word or chairman, uh, to the woman's point. I don't know how many parking spaces are currently at Metro Plaza versus what's being proposed in the project. What's that difference? Or approximately?
I'm just taking a look at our notes here. I think overall in Metro Plaza, there's thirty-seven hundred parking spaces. I don't know what the differential is.
I believe, uh, Robert, thirty-seven is actually the plan maximum for the redevelopment plan. Um, I believe we started at eleven hundred spaces, surface parking spaces roughly for the whole site.
And where will the customers for BJ's be able to park? Will they be able to park on this facility or elsewhere?
There will still be surface parking uh available for the BJ's customers uh during the transition period. Um, presumably, they could also utilize the garage. Uh, it will be open to the public. Um, I don't know how convenient that would be for BJ shoppers, but the the short answer is there will be surface parking. That will still be available for shoppers at BJ's.
Yeah, just just to add to that, the parking that's kind of in front of BJ's now will still be there. Go back to the way it's made out of the plan as well as the little bit of parking. Well, it's not a little bit. There's some parking on the side too, on the east side, couldn't the light rail station? It'll remain.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody, and um. I want to uh thank the caller for uh checking in. Uh, we. I want to thank the caller for checking in. We do have a limit of one public comment per application, so you are only allowed to comment once per application. With that said, anybody else, if you'd like to comment on this application tonight, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Chairman, seeing no other members of the public wishing to speak, a motion to close.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed with one comment. All right, Matt, do you want to wrap up?
Uh, sure. Thank you, Chairman. So there was several reports issued by review agents, divisions of the city. I just want to make the record clear that and ask the applicant if they've received those, if they've been able to review them, if they will be complying with those reports. Specifically, the memo from the Division of Transportation and the Division of City Engineering.
Yes, we've received all those reports. We have had the chance to review them. We do, we will be working with those agencies. There are a couple of, of comments that we have, particularly with engineering, that we'll discuss with them. Specifically, with regards to paving on Maron Boulevard, we know that there are paving plans and improvements planned for Maron. So we just need to understand how that will coordinate. We, we do acknowledge that for most developments, there's the paving requirement and, and we acknowledge, and you, we obviously will comply with that, but the practical point is we don't want to pave it, rip it up, and then pave it again, so we'll obviously work with engineering.
And there is some comments in their memo regarding easements. Those were no, of no issue?
Uh, no, they were, they were not issues for us. We can comply with those.
And just a continuation along that line. So there's, obviously, there's some interim designs here, commissioners, where there's public open spaces, plazas, some streets and interim design that are going to be remaining private at this time or part of this, these parcels. So, uh, any of those areas will also kind of be these same sort of public easements in the interim. There are numerous staff recommendations that planning staff has required. And one of the, the larger catch-all ones is in relation to a developer's agreement, which asks for them to work with the city on a developer's agreement in a form that we would approve regarding this phasing, this implementation, the maintenance, the future work and dedication of these open spaces, infrastructure, and rights of way. I think that we should also add any sort of necessary easements into maybe not that developers agreement, but potentially in the the recordation and perfecting of the subdivision at the time, at this time. I could definitely work with the applicant on that. There are, in addition to that condition, there was nine in total. Just to ask the applicant again if they were able to review those and if those are agreeable.
Yes, we did have the opportunity to review them and they are agreeable to the applicant.
Okay, and just some nitty-gritty items. I think that there's, I was working with Matthew Newells on just some cutoff texts in the zoning table. I think there's still just a couple more cells in the table that are cut off. We can just fix those in resolution compliance. And just another item that we've talked about a couple of times is, uh, there's potentially a future landing of the Sixth Street Embankment Bridge, pedestrian bridge in their plaza. And one of the utility poles in conflict with, with the potential alignment of that future bridge, so just to take a look at that and fix that as well and resolution compliance. Yes. I think the overall, the, the testimony was, was quite clear and concise and we're happy to see the second phase of, of this Harpsmith Coast Station West District, West Neighborhood District, staff recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Matt. I appreciate it.
Sure, I would like the motion to approve case P two-two dash zero-nine-seven as presented to the board this evening with staff recommendation and conditions.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded for approval with conditions discussed.
Okay, acting vice chair Gengeden.
I just want to say thank you so much for a very detailed presentation, and I'm excited to, for the shop right as a resident of Jersey City. My vote is aye.
Commissioner Torres?
I just say and hello. And thank you for shop right and the judgeship. Oh, yeah, you know. You went from Bow Street to Sixth Street, now they're, it's still still part of the neighborhood, you know, and very part of our neighborhood. With them as it goes on, and so people really meet that shopper center and with the building, it's great. Good job. So with that, I vote aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
So, yeah, I go to shop, right, and the current driving through there is horrific. I mean, that light doesn't control the flow of walk pedestrians that are coming by with carts and I also go to Home Depot that has a ramp that goes up, and there aren't pedestrians on it, and it's much safer and easier to get through. That being said, I think this is heartening in the sense that it will continue to move from the south going north along Marvin Boulevard, some of the great projects that have already taken place. I think it's fantastic that this team has put together a great presentation and it works so well with not only commerce but community. And I think it's a great example of how projects can get done. And I think the facade along Marvin will also be welcome for those who use that corridor to go to New York or come back from New York. So I wholeheartedly vote aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Yeah, I was so much worried when all these big buildings are coming up and I thought Shop Right is going to go away, but no, it's going to stay and the whole community, especially we always go to Shop Right and we want Shop Right to be here, so I am going to vote aye.
And Chairman Leixon?
Yeah, I do want to echo Commissioner Lipsky's assessment on, you know, the Home Depot parking lot. I try not to go there often. I try not to do any home improvements myself. But it is
You got a good wife.
It's a good system to, to get in and out of there. Pedestrians aren't a you know, mixing in with pedestrians aren't really an issue in there as they are with the surface parking lot at the current shop, right? And I've never had any trouble getting in or out of that store. The escalators are always working. The elevators are always working. And, you know, never had a problem, so I think it's a great model. I'd like to see more second floor retail in the city. I think it's something that, you know, I hope we catch up to as, you know, a lot of the other major cities in the world have it. Um, I do want to address the deviations. Uh, the architectural deviations, I, I really think are de minimis. I, I don't think they cause any detriment to the redevelopment plan. I think they're all in line with the master plan. I don't see any conflicts there. Uh, as far as the signage, the Shop Right sign being illuminated twenty-four hours a day, we usually I don't want to speak for everybody. I usually don't like to see signs illuminated every, for twenty-four hours a day. I, I do see that sign though as, as almost a wayfinding. If there is gonna be a twenty-four hour loading dock in operation, the last thing we need is, you know, tractor trailers driving past and not seeing the shop right because the signs aren't on. I don't know how you could miss it, but who knows? So I do think that the signage is appropriate for the shop right being lit twenty-four hours. Uh, as far as the building signage, again, I don't think there's any detriment to the redevelopment plan or the master plan. I also see those as wayfinding signs, the increased size on the residential signage. I think gives a, you know, a decent cue to our first responders that would have to enter the building as to where the main entrance is. Of course, they're all trained in that to begin with, but, you know, in the heat of the moment, it's good to see that that wayfinding sign would be in place. One thing that I really found impressive tonight, the landscaping on the tower base, I think is really impressive. So besides that, it was a very detailed presentation. You know, most of our questions were answered before we got a chance to ask them. But I think it's a great win for the city. I think it's a great win for the the applicant, and I appreciate Shop Right for hanging in there and making this happen as well. So, great job all involved, and I'm gonna vote aye.
On a motion approved with conditions as stated here tonight, motion carries on favor.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody.
Hey, thank you.
Please do.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, Matt, I will give you the, I'm assuming you're presenting or is Tanya presenting on the?
Tanya's presenting.
Okay, do we want to go with Ocean Ave or do we want to go with the Jersey Ave Light Rail redevelopment plan? I think we only have one possibly.
Tanya, are you out there?
Yes.
Sigh of relief on Matt's part.
Yeah.
So you, you said you only want to do one? The Jersey of Light Rail is probably less than five minutes if even.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Let's do Jersey Ave Light Rail then first if we can.
Yeah.
Because Santo has to recuse on that as well.
The Jersey of Light Rail?
Yeah, yeah, he has three cues on that. Again, just like the last application, I'm comfortable going forward without counsel. If at any moment we feel like we need counsel, I'm gonna put the brakes on and we'll carry to a date after we can confer with outside counsel.
Got it.
I don't know, maybe Santo gives me a couple shekels out of his paycheck for tonight, but we'll see how that goes. Uh, all right, so I'm gonna skip item thirteen right now. We're gonna go to item fourteen. It's case P two-two dash one-seven-one is the review and discussion of amendments to the Jersey Ave Light Rail redevelopment plan to clarify the inclusionary zoning requirements. Formal action may be taken.
Uh, so I'm, I'm not even gonna bring anything up, because it's just, just not necessary, but it does require a plan amendment. So when we wrote the Jersey Ave Light Rail redevelopment plan, it was during the original IZO. For those of you who don't know, the first IZO that was written was overturned by the courts. The first IZO had a twenty percent onsite requirement with a potential of, you know, buying out the requirement either through community benefits. Within the Jersey Ave Light Rail plan, it was pretty specific. There's three areas where you can utilize a bonus. One is affordable housing. The other is the light rail station. And the other one is a school construction bonus. There is also an open space bonus, but that has been there, I think, since the eighties. When we were writing it, we wrote the affordable housing bonus to say twenty percent. And what we want to make really clear is that since we spent all that time doing all of those community meetings and we hired a financial analyst firm, the Auto Group, we believe that the twenty percent onsite is completely developable. And we want to make it a hundred percent clear that we want twenty percent onsite, and we are not interested in basically watering that down and bringing it down to the fifteen percent, which is what the new IZO would require. That is all that this amendment does.
Was that it, Tanya?
That's it. That's what I said. It's super quick. It's like, there's one bonus and it talks about the twenty percent, and so we're, we're taking out any hints that we don't even think, really even, we don't even think that they suggest that there's a fifteen percent or that you can use the second IZO instead of the twenty percent that's plainly written in the plan. But we are gonna go ahead and make that black and white crystal clear.
Okay, I love it. Any questions, anybody?
Tanya, to be clear, that would be twenty percent?
Twenty percent, correct.
Okay.
All right, anybody else?
I'm trying to say, any developer comes into that plan, ask to maintain a twenty percent no matter what.
If they want to utilize
Anything, we're not gonna listen to anything that's not in that mark.
So they, that plan has multiple bonuses that you can take advantage of. One of them is the affordable housing bonus, so that's the one that I'm speaking of pretty plainly. And yes, it's twenty percent, and that would be the minimum that they would be able to acquire, and there's no payouts, no community benefits that can reduce that.
I get.
It's good.
Agreed. All right, if there's no other questions, let's open it up for public comment. I see Benjamin Wine's hands raised. We'll get right back to him. I don't think he has a public comment right now. I don't know, Cam, did you promote him already?
No, he lowered his hand.
Okay, okay, we'll get right back to counsel. All right, so anybody from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Any comments on this application?
Chairman, seeing no one from the public wishing to speak, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Public is closed. Commissioner Lipsky killing it with closing public tonight. Love it.
I love the rapidity in which the director has spoken. I joyfully vote aye.
All right, we gotta make the motion first, but we'll get there. All right, so obtain a motion now?
I would like to make a motion to approve case P two-two dash seventy-one as presented to the board this evening for approval.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded for approval.
Will you do me the honor?
Okay, so acting vice chair Gungadin.
Tanya, I want to thank you and your staff for coming up with these amendments to the Jersey Avenue Light Rail Development Plan. This one enable a lot of the affordable units, make good use out of it, so my vote is aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
My apologies for trying to outpace the director. I think this is a good balance. I vote aye.
Commissioner Torres?
No, I also tried to enter the whole plan staff and stay in a firm, you took a firm, firm statement on just this area has its whipper set and it kept that is a step I haven't seen taken all my years on a planning board, that you're so firm at it. And I hope anytime a developer comes in and you feel that there's an area we take the same and the public out there, hope they realize they're taking a stand here, actually, fifty percent affordable house. Hope they realize they're taking a stand here actually, fifty percent affordable house. At a very big eye. To try if I'm on that and the plan is safe.
All right, and Chairman Langston. I couldn't have said it better than Commissioner Torres just did. I'm gonna vote I for a uh positive recommendation to City Council.
Motion carries all in favor.
All right, thank you. Uh let's get Santo back in the room. I uh let him know that we were almost done with that one and we're almost ready for him. Uh Cam, can you promote Benjamin Wine again? Or I'm sorry, for the first time.
Yes, promoted Benjamin Wine. The um. The only other attorney that uh we haven't received. Uh request to carry now to November fifteenth is Zach Rosenberg, so um. You think maybe this might be a good time to promote them as well?
Sure, and we also have uh. Chuck Harrington for uh.
Correct.
Route four forty and eleven Bennett Street.
Correct, okay.
I got you, Cam. I got you. I got you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Just just real quick, I I I'm apologizing. I had my hand up there during uh the pride.
I I didn't think you had anything to add to it, but you know. That I don't want to deny you that right. Um unfortunately. I thought we would have gotten through item fifteen tonight. That doesn't look to be the case, but that doesn't help you out in the least.
Right.
Uh we have two items up for you, I believe.
Yeah, so yeah, so it's case seventeen and eighteen um. Yeah, so I was just gonna ask if it's all right if we could be carried with our notice preserved to uh to November fifteenth would be ideal if possible.
Sure, um. I don't know if the fifteenth uh. Can happen. I don't know, that's that's between. You know, you, the planning department, may at a later date. Uh I'll I'll touch base with them tomorrow, see what the agenda is gonna look like. But uh we will uh carry item seventeen and eighteen. That's case P two-two dash one-one-six. Is a preliminary and final major site plan with variance for two fifty-two Central Avenue. Uh we're gonna carry that right now to a date certain. November fifteenth with preservation of notice. And also carry item eighteen is case P two-two dash one-one-seven. It's a minor site plan with variance for two fifty-three Central Avenue. We're carrying that also to a date certain November fifteenth. Uh if anybody from the public is here for those applications tonight, this will be your notice. You will not receive additional notice. And uh council, I would like to get you on record to state that. Uh you will allow the board to extend its time to act on both of these items.
Yes, I certainly will. If that time's expired, you certainly have it through uh through that date.
All right, thank you, council. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
You too. Thanks for hanging in there. I apologize.
No problem.
All right, Cam, so you did hear from. Uh I believe Stephen Joseph and Nick Sharami.
Correct, yeah. So I have uh via email. Been communicated that they are requesting to carry with preservation of notice the following items on the agenda. That is. Item nineteen, case P twenty-two dash zero through nine. As item twenty, case P twenty-two dash zero nine two. Um item twenty-one. Case P twenty-two dash zero eight four. Uh those are three uh cases uh back to back. And they are to be. Carried to November fifteenth um.
Big night.
Yep, another big night. Some of these are small though, so don't be too uh. Uh devoid of hope um.
You have had hope in the. First place, Cam, but uh. Okay, uh so we're gonna carry P two-two dash zero three-nine is a minor site plan for four seventy-seven. Uh Monmouth uh carrying to a date certain. November fifteenth, we're carrying case P two-two dash zero eight four is a minor site plan with C variance. For two ninety-two Witten Street to a date certain November fifteenth. We're carrying case P two-two dash zero six four as a continue uh conditional use license. For one thirty-eight Griffith Street. Also to a date certain. November fifteenth.
Um well, actually, their counsel uh Mister Rosenberg is with us at this moment um. Yeah.
Let me just move a window here. I couldn't see him. Mister Rosenberg, good evening.
Uh good evening, Chairman.
Unfortunately, I don't even think we're close to you tonight.
Yeah, we're uh number twenty-two, so uh if we could be carried to the fifteenth with preservation of notice, that would be appreciated.
Okay, you got it. And uh while we got you on record, I would ask that you extend the time the board has to act on this application.
Yes, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, sir. So we're carrying case P two-two dash dash zero six four conditional use license. Cam, did I call that by mistake?
Um yes. Uh the one that uh you you missed was uh I I understand why you did this because the. Uh case is broken into two pages. Um. It's item twenty, case P twenty-two dash zero nine two, address two seven nine Communipaw.
That's what I missed, okay. All right, I apologize. So I've already carried Griffith Street. Uh Mister Rosenberg, thank you. I appreciate it. And.
Thank you.
Carry due a date certain uh November fifteenth. Uh we're also carrying as per uh Mister Joseph's Communication Case P two-two dash zero nine two. Minor site plan for two seventy-nine Communipaw Avenue with preservation of notice. And uh we do have Mister Harrington up on the screen. Always a pleasure to see you this late, Mister Harrington.
Likewise. So, yeah, I I would think uh number fifteen that you referred to earlier, three sixty-two, three sixty-four, Sixth Street. That we officially carry that to the um the fifteenth. The preservation of notices and in a waiver of timeframes uh. Cause I I. I um. Yeah, I think that that woman may have left already, so I. I would want to, I wouldn't want to go without that, without her.
I I apologize if uh if I forced your hand there. I didn't even see an attorney listed on that application on the uh agenda.
Oh, I see it, yeah.
Yeah. We're gonna carry that, carry case P two-one dash zero three-five file final major site plan with C variances for. Three sixty-two to three sixty-four Sixth Street, carrying that to a date certain. November fifteenth.
Okay, and then I have number sixteen, which, you know, we can carry. I was just if the board's inclined to hear. One case and knock it off the agenda. I think it's a pretty quick one where it really just has to do with. Taking the the parking out of the flood zone. Uh and bringing up the stackers, but I'll I'll defer to you um as to whether or not you would want to. Even attempt to hear that.
We giving that bonus point the speed the.
I can name that tune in ten minutes.
Tanya, how much time do you need for uh Ocean Ave? The development plan.
Twenty minutes? I can do it in twenty minutes. I mean, we it's uh.
You can do it in twenty minutes. I'm sure there's public comment.
More than that.
Counsel. I'm sorry.
I see the tea leaves through that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, Chairman, uh the one thing I would say is is uh we uh we we have three weeks, so we have the election. We have a break. I. Love making Jersey prosper, but it's your call.
Yeah, I I hate to break precedent on more ten o'clock. No new applications after that. Um I, you know, Tanya says twenty minutes, that can turn into forty minutes to an hour easily with with.
Yeah, understood. I I didn't know if that was gonna be a quick one. That's that's why.
Yeah, you never know. Um. All right, council, I apologize uh. So we're gonna carry case P two-two dash one-five-two. Uh final site plan amendment approval with C variances for six eighty-two Route four forty and eleven Bennett Street. To a date certain eleven fifteen. Uh once again, if you're here from the public to comment on that application, this is your notice. Uh you won't receive a new notice and council, I did want to uh confirm on record that you give the board uh. The extension to act on this application.
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you, council. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Chairman, you're still here.
How'd I do?
I gotta tell you, you're crushing it tonight. Getting extensions, getting.
All of it, all of it.
Housing bonuses.
Chairman, I see somebody has a hand up.
I don't know what that's in reference to. Uh Cam, let's uh let's promote that person and then uh we're gonna open up for Ocean Avenue.
Promoted.
Hey there, can anyone hear me?
We can.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh hi, everyone, for your patience. Um I'm a resident of three sixty-six Sixth Street. Um I just want to put on the record that um I never received any notice for the um for. I think it's number fifteen on the agenda tonight. I've spoken with other members of the um other owners in this in this building and they also have not received notice.
So you're a condo building, correct?
Uh yes, sir.
Okay, um most likely the same thing happened to me a few weeks ago. It happens all the time. It is perfectly legal under state law, unfortunately. Um. The tax records, the the applicant works off the tax records. To. Send notice out. A- as bananas as this sounds. They don't send notice to every single address in a condo-owned building. They notice the association. I assume your association doesn't have a mailbox in your building as mine does.
You listen correctly.
That that's where the notice goes.
Got it, okay.
Um so. Thank you for coming in tonight. I apologize.
No, no, it's all good. No, I know.
Mister Mister Chairman, if I could interrupt since I'm here, I'm I'm. I'm the attorney for that application, so if Mister Ammon Monty wants to reach out to me, he can. Contact me, you know, through the uh planning office or, you know, see Harrington at conalfolly.com. Since we're we're adjourned tonight.
Sure thing. Appreciate everyone. All right, thank you, Mr. Monty. Thanks for hanging in there. I apologized. We didn't get to it tonight.
All good. Cheers next time. Bye bye.
All right, thank you. Bye. Council, thanks for throwing your email out there on uh on public record. All right.
Nine fifty-nine.
Let's do it. Let's open up the last one. So uh we're going to item thirteen is case P two-two dash one-four-two. Review and discussion of report concerning the determination. Of the Ocean Ave Ward A study area, the expansion of the Ocean Avenue South redevelopment plan. As an area in need of redevelopment with the power of condemnation. And as an area in need of rehabilitation, formal action may be taken.
So uh. The clock on. Uh so just to start off, um because this is a designation for an area in need of redevelopment. And we are recommending uh power of eminent domain. I just wanna uh kind of. Put into evidence the notices. We sent notices to the Jersey Journal um to be uh. Published September second and September ninth. Of course, you know, this has been carried a couple of meetings. And but we also sent certified mail to the property owners uh that are for the sites that we're recommending for using. Um condemnation, power of eminent domain um on August tenth um. All of my receipts are at least on the data portal and I believe that I sent them separately to council just to verify.
You did, and thank you, uh Chairman. They are in order. We can mark them as A one for purposes of the record.
All right, thanks, Santo.
Okay, I'm gonna screen share. Okay. Okay, so uh city council authorized planning board to conduct the study um into. The blocks that are listed below. Um. They specifically asked us to study um for blocks twenty-seven to a one, lots twenty through twenty-five. Whether or not it would meet the area in need of redevelopment with the con- power of condemnation that was in the resolution. And the remainder of the plans that are delineated within the boundary were to be studied um as non-condemnation area. Um so area in need of redevelopment without the power of eminent domain, that was uh the marching orders. From the city council for the resolution. This is the area, um as you can see, uh it's west of the Bayview Cemetery. And it goes from north new, sorry, New Avenue all the way up to Fulton. Um I'm gonna. Bring uh another, the next slide will show you kind of how this area sits in between. The Ocean Ave South redevelopment plan and the Ocean Bayview redevelopment plan. Uh this study is for the expansion of Ocean South. Um and so this uh these sites kind of clean up all the gaps within those two. Uh study areas. And so if you can see, if you're able to see my my pointer, Ocean Avenue South, this area here. Where we're studying, this is Ocean Bayview, which is a much older plan. And then we'll be taking all the way over here. So we'll be cleaning up the whole line to be within redevelopment. But again, it will be Ocean Avenue South. So the first site that I want to talk about uh tonight um uh. You may know it as the endowment forest site. I'm sure you've driven past it. It's been there for a very long time. I think it's always been. Uh a nursery or forest uh for flowers, um especially right next to it uh that would have been used for the cemetery. We are recommending that this site um. That it meets the here, actually, let me kind of walk you through some of the areas. So based on some of the. The pictures that I was able to find online, it's really kind of hard to pinpoint when it was abandoned, but it's been at least abandoned for the last ten years. If you're seeing the pictures on the slide in front of you, uh you can kind of see the 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 chronology of how the abandonment. Has settled over time. So in twenty twenty, in twenty twelve, you can see that there is, you know. Uh still some remnants left over from the the covering of the of the nursery. Um and then in twenty twenty-one, you can see how the building is continuing to kind of fall apart. Um and if you're looking on the picture on the left, that is uh the the greenhouse that you're looking at. The top of the greenhouse and you can see that there's completely, the roof is completely gone. This is the former nineteen seventy-five photo for all of the, if you have the chance to to um look through the study. Uh I did put together a package that shows each and every site within this uh study plan. Shows the nineteen thirty-eight and the nineteen seventy-five photos. Um it's a really fantastic uh. Kind of representation of what was there and what's there now. Um if you wanted to take a deeper look, we're not going to be going into that deep dive. Right now in this presentation. Um but I just wanted to show for at least this purposes, for talking about these sites. You can kind of see what it used to be um and what it's become and how it's been abandoned. These are some photos that were taken in the field by myself um in June and you could see that there is uh barbed wire. Uh they no longer have protective roofs. The structures are completely exposed. The street wall of the greenhouse is falling apart with large holes in some places, creating a safety concern. Ventilation equipment um along with nursery equipment has been left behind and exposed to the elements. The chain link fence of barbed wire top along the northern part of the property is broken and rusted. The building uh formerly a retail store in the property has also been vacant for at least the last ten years. And has substantially deteriorated. The roof and the siding are rotted with large holes exposing to the interior and to the interior weather. The front is secured by a roll-down gate that is completely rusted. A bus stop directly in front of the northern portion of this site where the curb cut uh where there's curb cut would be, would have been. A bus stop directly in front of the northern portion of this site where the curb cut, uh, where there's curb cut would be, would have been is where vehicles would have been able to access the greenhouses. This is a major safety and welfare concern for riders who will use this bus at all hours of the day. Um, the development of the site with ground floor commercial uh, would perpetuate some of the principles of smart planning as a. And I will go through that, that criteria a little bit better. These are, just wanted to go through some of the photos with you. So this is the criteria that I believe are met. Um, again, uh, I'm not gonna read them word for word. They are up on the screen for your reference. Um, and I do just kind of want to uh, reiterate that um, that it is definitely the uh. Uh, dilapidation, um, I would say the lack of uh, sanitary facilities. There's not really excessive land coverage here because it's kind of all green, um, but it's a detillous land use. Um, and why that leads to overtime, of course, um, is to uh. Sorry, let me just pop back here for one second. There we go. Uh, right, uh, so it. The development of the ground floor commercial, uh, if it can go forward with, with complete redevelopment. Perpetuates principles, smart planning, provides more access to community resources for walkable community, especially in front of the bus stop. Provides more eyes on the street along a major commercial corridor. There's a bus stop heavily utilized. And so let me go forward to the next one. Yes, oh, sorry. And also the discontinuance of the use, the buildings previously used for commercial manufacturing industrial purposes. The abandonment of such buildings, the same being allowed to fall into such great disrepair as to be untenable. Uh, I believe that this is the, the perfect example of criteria B. The next site uh, is the site that directly adjacent to it, to the south. Um, you might know it as a used car dealership. Also a repair shop. You can kind of see here, that's what it's always been. Uh, the nineteen thirty-seven photo, which is fun, which I think means that there's toilets in the building. I'm not a hundred percent sure. Um, but auto repairs uh, over on the Chapel Avenue side. This is what's there in the Chapel Avenue side now, just gonna pop back. You see the building really hasn't changed too much if you're looking at the nineteen seventy-five photo. Um, obviously the facade's changed, but the structure is still what it was. Um, what really stands out in this picture uh, is that there's no sidewalk. Right? And so the, the use, the commercial um, auto repair use kind of spills out into the public right of way into the sidewalk. Um, this uh, building is adjacent to a residential neighborhood. Um, so being able to walk down the street from Ocean Avenue down Chapel Avenue is almost impossible. Um, because the cars are spilled out all the way to the right of way, all the way to the street. You can see there's not even a sidewalk. It's just asphalt all the way throughout. Again, this is the ocean side of it, so this uh, it's a corner lot on Chapel and Ocean. Uh, you can kind of see uh. That these were used again uh, for, you look, you look all the way to the photo on the left, you can even see some of the gravestones. And the tombstones that were there for. And this is what's there today. Uh, again, kind of what we talked about before is uh, the a- access to the sidewalk is completely closed off. That's for the chap- for the chapel lab side of it. Uh, the Ocean Avenue side of it, um, we see barbed wire. Um, excessive height for fencing. Um, we have. Down a little bit more. The entire site is used for the vehicular storage and parking. Uh, the condition of the latest, the, the lot is substandard. The chain link fence is significantly higher, correct, than the barbed wire. Uh, the site is not well maintained. As there are spare car and mechanical parts throughout the site. Two, the fence openings along Chapel Avenue act as vehicular access points without any curb cuts. This condition is created by the use in our detrimental to the safety of any pedestrian and cause additional issues for safe vehicular circulation. Along Chapel Avenue. There are also two curb cuts along Ocean Avenue for vehicular access. That create more points of conflict for the pedestrian traffic along Ocean Avenue. This one site of roughly seven thousand five hundred square feet has four curb cuts. The faulty design or really lack thereof creates a layout that is detrimental to the safety and health and the public welfare. The use is not a permitted use, nor would it have been a permitted use in nineteen seventy-four before the R one zoning was in effect. Furthermore, a used dealership is not an appropriate use along a neighborhood commercial corridor, but rather more appropriate for a highway oriented corridor. The auto repair shop takes up, the building takes up a hundred percent of the lot. The front of the building is one long entire curb cut, as you were able to see with the three bays. These conditions create unsafe unsanitary issues for pedestrians along for neighboring residents. Again, it is also not a permitted use, even though it has always historically been used for the same. Um, but designating these lots, uh, twenty-three to twenty-five, but also including uh, twenty-one. Which was the uh, nursery, uh, allows for the removing of the dealers' uses, uh, which are adjacent to the residential neighborhood use. And the neighborhood commercial corridor. Uh, up on the screen, I'm not gonna read them word for word, are the three criteria that I think are met. Uh, in order to justify the designation of area in need of redevelopment. Um, and I kind of just wanna reiterate, this is, this is almost word for word from what's in the, what's in the plan. And the conclusion of why I think it's important that we use powers of eminent domain, um, and not just uh, area in need of redevelopment. Um, because a lot has been, at least the one lot has been abandoned for at least, at least the last ten years. And falling into a really great state of disrepair and is completely untenable. Um, the lack of utilization has helped caused the area to remain stagnant and unproductive. Uh, the designation of these lots as a whole will allow for proper redevelopment, uh, for a whole block front. Needed in order to prevent further deterioration and to really provide a concerted effort to correct and address the issues. Um, and advance the public welfare. Uh, so I think that the power eminent domain uh, is proper here. In order to redevelop it multiple uh, de- dilapidated sites. Um, there's at least three owners uh, within the site, and this gives us a chance to kind of uh, redevelop that block end as a whole. The rest of the uh, boundary areas, I did not designate as an area in need of redevelopment. I designated and felt that they met the standards for area need of rehabilitation, which um, I believe at this point, you guys are mostly familiar with. Cause we've talked about it before. Um, and it's just that the utilities, the infrastructure, the sewer is at least fifty years or more. Um, along with the housing stock, um, and so that there would be um. Basically, i- it provides the parameter that there's so much work would need to be put into it. Um, that it justifies uh, redevelopment in order to help kind of spur that uh, improvement on. And as you can see within um, the census tract, the, the green highlighted areas are uh, the areas that we are designating. Um, they all within fifty percent, so meaning the majority of the houses there were built before nineteen fifty-nine, uh, nineteen forty-nine. And this is just that final kind of piece of paper that certifies uh, exactly what we said from the M U A. Uh, that the infrastructure is at least fifty years old or more. That is. All that I have. For this presentation. I think I did it in fifteen minutes, so.
You did.
You did it. Congratulations.
Tanya's on a roll.
Um, all right, let's open it up for questions uh, for Tanya. I, I do wanna. Get into. The, the outreach that goes into this, Tanya, um, uh, especially with the properties that. You wanna recommend for eminent domain.
Yep.
Are you able to reach all of the owners of the properties? Uh, have you met with them? Do they respond to anybody? What, what's that process?
So uh, the, the only proper, I guess, I'd say process really is that uh, we send the certified letter. It, it's, it's our practice, I guess, in-house um, to not really uh. Kind of negotiate or deal with that. Um, we, we've said in the past that the study is available for viewing. Um, and then we always recommend that, um, if an, if an applicant or an owner has an issue that they um, retain attorney. And that they have the opportunity to provide a written opposition or show up to the planning board um, within opposition. But because it's not your kind of standard fair application, we try to um, leave most of that to. I guess, I, what I would call kind of more legalese stuff.
Yeah, so Chairman, the truth is, it wouldn't really be proper to engage the property owners in, in conversations. To mitigate anything or change the trajectory or outcome of the study. The study is supposed to be neutral and is really just to study the properties and determine. If they meet the criteria under the statute, so uh. To verify some information and make sure that the information that we're relying on to. Do the study, that would be proper, but to, to engage in any type of. You know, I guess. Outreach and, and. You know, feelings from the property owners, that's, that's not proper under, under the statute. It's really supposed to be a, a fact-finding mission. And uh, a question of whether statutorily it meets the criteria under the, under the statute. To uh, recommend the designation by the city, so legally they are entitled to. We noticed that it's happening, but that's really where, where it ends.
Uh, agreed. I, I mean, I, I'm well aware of our role here. Um, we don't. Take properties from people. Um, we simply give the recommendation to city council. If city council wants to condemn with eminent domain. That's up to them, but um. You know, I don't think anybody on this board takes it lightly to give that recommendation. Uh, you know, we've gone through. Condemning and rehabilitation and redevelopment so many times, we're all familiar with it. Commissioner Ramirez, welcome. Uh, this is always a tough part of our job, but um. You know, I, I'm just making sure that, not that it's planning staff's job to negotiate anything. Uh, with landowners, it's, uh, again, it's really up to city council what they wanna do with it, this information. We simply make a recommendation on uh, whether it meets the criteria. Um. So that being said, you know, anybody else, any questions?
Right. Well, Chairman, just for purposes of the record, uh, you know, the concept of eminent domain for, for those in the public realm that are listening. Uh, there's a whole process involved with condemnation of property, obviously. And of course, uh, condemnation is not without compensation. The. Government does not take property and not compensate landowners in those instances. And if and when it gets to that level, the property owners absolutely have rights. They will be compensated and that process will play out. And sometimes it's a partial condemnation or taking for road widensings, for easement purposes. And those are all subject to appraisals and payment of compensation for it. Uh, but it is a necessary power that needs to be done for the betterment of, of everybody sometime, so. I just think it's important the public understand that.
Uh, agreed. And again, this board doesn't have that power. It's city council that has that power. Uh, we strictly make a recommendation.
Correct.
Um, as a, as a board member, though, this is really a uncomfortable. Thing to even see come up in a plan, um, in any, any uh, amendment, any plan for me. Um, and I would like to start with this, that Tanya, if it's being brought up by the city council to do the study. And does it, isn't it the city council that can? Ask the question, why is these things not enforced? You made a statement that on three oh five, three oh seven Ocean Avenue Chapel, the cars are parked on the sidewalk. The sidewalk is full of asphalt. The uh, people can't walk, people can't move. And it was unacceptable and not permitted in eighteen seventy-four. Why is it permitted now? In Greenville, I live in the Neptune Avenue area. They come around when we have garbage in front of the house and they give us a ticket. But there's a building that's been saved for ten years and looks abandoned, and I pass it all the time. In the flower shop. Um, where is the enforcement on that? That forces the owner of that property to do something with it, sell the property or another means. Of getting rid of the property that no enforcement being done. And the garages are a good example of. It being seen every day with people standing in front of it, and nobody's telling them to take their cars off the sidewalks. As a planning board member, I think that's unacceptable that the city council is asking us to approve something. Where they should be looking at enforcement in the city to stop that from, those things from happening. You know, you have all type of people walking on a sidewalk right now that have to walk in the street. And we look at, we have to. Endemic domain, condemnation, whatever it is to this property to clear that up. And I feel that there's other ways that the city could clear some of these properties up. And uh, they should look at it different ways. I don't wanna get into each one right now or say what I, you know, off the top of my head, what I would suggest. But um. It's a slippery slope for me when we have to take this route. Um, for something, even though the council, I understand, they do get compensated. There is some type of payment, right? Um, I'm pretty sure, well, I don't know, but, but I shouldn't say that.
Also, Commissioner, I guess I would, I would address you in this manner. First of all, uh, enforcement is something, obviously, that. The various departments in the city in charge of enforcement of the codes uh, are responsible for. We've had this issue and conversation before. It's not this board, it's not planning, it's enforcement. And uh, there may be proceedings out there underway regarding enforcement. And that's one avenue. This particular avenue, we are part of the process as the planning board, the mayor and council decide to. Have this body undertake the study. That's the way it works under the statute, as we all know. The council has decided that planning, study the issue and bring it to this board to determine. You know, public hearing, whether or not the statutory criteria has been met under the statute. That's all this body is doing, is determining whether or not the statutory criteria has been met. This body does not have the authority or power to designate the area in need with, with the power of condemnation. Or without the power of condemnation. That is something only the council can do. So it is quite possible that we make a finding and we say, yes, it meets the statutory criteria. It goes back to the council and they don't act on it. Now, that's probably not likely, but it's possible. It happens, but they can, things get shelved. They can act on it and they can act on it, even if we say. It doesn't meet the criteria. It makes it harder. they can act on it even if we say it doesn't meet the criteria. It makes it harder for them to take that action. They have to go through a little bit more of a uh exercise as opposed to if we find that it does meet the criteria. But of course, I would always advise the board that we've got the best planning staff in the state, that the director herself has conducted the study. And if she's telling me that it meets the criteria, I don't know how I look at her and say I don't agree. Uh you know, I I really from what I've heard, I'd be hard pressed to challenge her findings. Uh it's very comprehensive and it meets the criteria, so we have a duty to do and uh that's how I would address that issue.
Well, that's a thought, that's a time to time. The buildings that are obvious, there's the little warehouse building, the little uh one-story uh brick building that I I can remember for years, always was empty. The parking lot of the forest, greenhouse. Obviously abandoned pieces of property. But at the same time, in your statement, you made a comment that it's also housing alongside that the water or the sewers might not be up to standards in nineteen forty-nine construction. My house personally is older than nineteen forty-nine. So what happens when that we take that stance? And then it turns around and says, well, the sewer or the water at my property doesn't meet the standards. Does it? It becomes a slope into other neighborhoods. And uh what can be done? That just because property was built in nineteen forty-nine and people still are there and just like the auto mechanic place, they they're still working there. What can be done to change that? And I think it's more enforcement or having the city fix the infrastructure that's causing this building to be these properties to be closer to uh eminent domain. And um that that's the scary slope that I can see happening in certain areas of the city. Uh so
So
that's the bottom of the stats.
The crit- the criteria that you're referencing, um area in need of rehabilitation, which you cannot use eminent domain for um is a different designation. Um so uh I understand the the concern, but very, and I I I believe I believe it was this board, um you could even argue that, and it has been done in the past, that the entire um city, Jersey City, is an area in need of rehab because of how old our infrastructure is. Uh it is just a different designation in order to to adopt a redevelopment plan. Um area in need of redevelopment is uh certainly something that has much more uh I I'd say uh harder criteria to prove. Um and then, of course, I'd say the highest is the eminent domain. Uh if I can just take you for two seconds through some of my thinking. Um in being in positions like this, um let's say that the florist, uh we put it all in redevelopment, um and we write re- and we write new zoning for the florists. Um and the uh the developer either chooses to sit on it for another ten, fifteen, twenty years, um and it remains vacant. Um or let's say that the developer decides to utilize the zoning and that site gets developed, but uh they will be next to the used dealership. Um and then it basically incumbent upon that developer to utilize zoning. You know, we say it all the time, zoning is not necessarily like a mandate, something that you can use um and kind of access. And so having the power of eminent domain, at least that tool allows us to ensure that the site won't continue to be vacant and abandoned. Um and if that we need that government level of intervention where we go through the process of eminent domain, it doesn't, it also doesn't mean that the person who owns the site cannot, will not be the designated developer. They are also able to become the designated developer owning the site. They just have to go through the process with the redevelopment agency to become designated. And I think why you wanna use that power of eminent domain is that you wanna ensure that the site doesn't continue to kind of remain vacant. Um and you wanna be more proactive. It's like the kind of the reason for using redevelopment is to give that kind of shot in the arm uh to the neighborhood. And I think if we really wanna, especially like what I envision, and when we go forward with meeting, and I know this is kind of irrelevant to this conversation, moving forward is using a space for a community center, whether it be police, fire, or um rec center. Um when we're going forward to the community, that's what we will be proposing to have that entire block um would be uh a missed opportunity if we got into kind of a bidding war with um basically the auto dealer or um the florist. Um so I I totally understand what you're saying. I I don't take this lightly at all either. Um, I don't know if that makes you feel any better, clears things up for you.
Sure, I just wanna piggyback on Commissioner Torres. Athena, thank you so much for taking on this. But for me, just a procedure, um a question I have. Were the owners contacted um in regards to the health and safety on these properties?
Um, oh, not by me. Uh, the only thing, the only the only thing that they received notice from me was through the certified mail. I'm explaining uh that we were conducting the study um and that we were going to be designating their site area in need of redevelopment using power, eminent power domain. Um, that was all. I mean, that that's a uh I I Commissioner Torres just said it. I, that site's been vacant for for a long time. I said ten years to be safe, but as far as I can remember, it's kind of always looked like that.
Longer.
And I believe, I believe that I have to look back, but I believe that it's switched hands um owners within the last either five to five to seven years.
Okay, anybody else? Any questions? All right, Tanya, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, so at this time, let's open it up for a public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this uh application, please raise your hand. If you're calling in.
Three or nine.
I'm sorry, what's that, Steve?
Seeing no hands raised, I move to close the public portion of this meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh public is closed. Uh, before we move on with a vote to uh do we need any board deliberation? Does the board wanna discuss this in the open? Okay, anybody else? Um, I I'll go on record before the vote as a a board deliberation. Like I said earlier, I I don't take eminent domain lightly. Um I I think Tanya's report speaks for itself. Uh I think you know, as far as the condemnation and the the rehabilitation aspects of it, um, the criteria is certainly met. And um I hesitantly would allow city council to move forward with um with that tool in their toolbox. I I feel like that's all I'm doing here tonight. And and again, as Santos said on record, they they can move forward. Either way, it's just a little more difficult for them if uh we don't agree with it. But um I I think Tanya's, you know, done the work. I think all the criteria is there, so um now, anybody else wants to discuss um? There are more than.
I'll just quickly say is it's a tool in the box. Uh, it's not something that planning takes on for for anything other than what was presented here tonight. And as council said, this is not, when we talk about eminent domain, it's not that the governing body goes in and takes something. There's a, there's negotiation, there's establishment of fair market, if it gets to that point. So uh you know, there are other legal and the steps that go forward in this, so that's my two cents.
All right, so um if there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-two-one-four-two, which is the accept the recommendation of the Ocean Avenue Ward A study area. Uh, re- it a need in redevelopment and the power of condemnation and an area in need of rehabilitation and sent to city council for adoption.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and a second for approval and forwarding to city council with a positive recommendation.
Okay, Acting Vice Chair Gengeden.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Um I just wanna make a statement, like, cast this one. Um even though that is a tool for city council, the city to have is a lot of to talk about. There's other tools that um to look maybe at that part um to use. Um there's areas in the city that could be developed um and changed and people could be affected by it. And when we say that they could make market money off of it, that would be the owner of the property, not the people that have in the pot. Yeah, that is a difference that we uh need to understand too. Oh, with that, um, anything that has to come with this type of tool, I I I have I would so, I'm gonna vote this.
Uh, sorry, was that a no?
No, yes.
No, okay. Thank you, okay. Uh and Chairman Langston.
So I'll reiterate my statement from before. Um I I don't take this lightly. Um you know, I respect Commissioner Torres's opinion here and um but I do think it's it's something that you know, we can give city council to back it up. Um y- you know, as far as redevelopment goes, that's why we're so busy here. Uh, there's so many areas of the city that are in need of redevelopment. Um, that you know, most of the city meets its criteria. Um so that's why we're seeing the volume that we see over and over and over again. This is how sites get improved. Um and improved is you know, not the same thing for everybody, let's say. Um, so I I I don't take it lightly, but I am willing to let city council do what they need to do and whatever that is. I think the report speaks for itself. I think the the criteria has been met. Um, and I just hope that city council does their due diligence before they move on an eminent domain recommendation, but I I think the the case is there, so I'm gonna vote aye.
Okay, motion carries six in favor, one opposed with recommendation to city council.
All right, thank you, everybody. So I think we've cleared out the rest of the agenda either by passing it or carrying it. Uh, let's move on to memorialization of resolutions, please.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to memorialize the following resolution. I have six. Resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, applicant is one ninety-five Bay Street Associates LLC for minor site plan with deviation approval, one ninety-five Bay Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one-one-five-zero-seven, lot four, case number is P two-two dash zero eight-three. Resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, case number P two-two dash one-zero-six for minor subdivision applicant Rajesh K B- Bandari. Address is four-twenty Ogden Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block two-four-zero-four, lot three-eight. Resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, applicant is Leon Tarekas Jersey City four-forty real estate for site plan extension approval for four oh five Route four-forty, Jersey City, New Jersey, block two-six, two-four-six-zero-two, lot one, case P two-two-one-four-seven. Resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City in the matter of the amendments to the Louis Muniz Marin Boulevard redevelopment plan regarding District Two urban design and historic preservation standards, hearing date October eleven, twenty twenty-two. Resolutions of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City in the matter of the creation and adoption of the Sixth Street Embark- Embankment Development Plan, hearing date October eleven, twenty twenty-two. Resolution of the Planning Board for the City of Jersey City, applicant is Hudson Exchange Phase Two LLC for preliminary and final major site plan and major subdivision approval four hundred dash four-twenty Marin Boulevard, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one-one-six-zero-three, lots fifty as subdivided, new lots fifty dash fifty-point-zero-one and lot fifty-one as subdivided, new lots five-one-point-zero-one, that case number is P two-two dash zero nine-seven.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Uh-huh, and a motion to memorialize the resolutions. Um uh Acting Vice Chair Gangaden.
Aye.
Uh Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
All right, thank you. Uh Santo, do you need anything? Does anybody need an executive session?
No, just an introduction to the new commissioner. I get on late.
Oh, that's our new commissioner, Jessica Ramirez.
Hi.
Jessica, what do you think? Doesn't get better than this, does it? Yeah, yeah.
What are you picking now, Commissioner?
Actually, we're a little early tonight.
Yeah, usually it's uh
Yeah, it's a little longer than this, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, usually it's eleven-ish.
She didn't get no public either, though. I could go far for a while.
Rising, we did.
You just, we just closed the meeting, then um
Yeah.
you know, we have a cutoff and we try and stick to it as best we can. Um, but yeah, this is it. This is it. All right, guys.
Great meeting, everyone. It was very interesting. The ShopRite, um I live right around there, and it's actually my um my BJ's and my ShopRite, so it was very cool, very interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, no, there's a lot going on.
Everybody was amazed with that. It's cool.
Yeah, we're all from the neighborhood, so.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all our shop, right?
All from ju- we're all in the neighborhood, so.
All right, guys. I would love to hear a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment.
All right, motion and second. Good night. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Jessica, for making it in there. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, guys.